I asked for a motion to approve the agenda, but we have to change.
We just need to, excuse me, clarify on what item is that?
Um.
The parcels to be potentially surplus and appraised. The parcel two, four.
I know these microphones say they're on, but they're not working.
Yep, we got nothing Jake.
Item 12.
Item 12. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we hear him now? All right, thank you. Two, four, zero, two, eight, seven, six, one, zero, zero, zero. That one already has been surplus but not appraised. The other ones have not been surplus, so.
What was that number again?
Two, four, zero, two, eight, seven, six, one, zero, zero, zero.
We're going to discuss that one, but it doesn't need to be surplus.
Surplus, no, it already has been surplus.
All right, would that change? I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll still move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to items not on the agenda, can approach the podium, state your name and address. Good morning Betty.
Good morning Commissioners. I've been attending almost every commission meeting for over a year now, so I was really surprised to see the discuss and approve advertisement for the county administrator position back on the agenda for today. I believe this was also discussed almost a year ago, and it failed because it was a budget buster with a salary total of about $130,000 a year. With the upcoming agenda recommendation from the courthouse improvement advisory committee regarding the judicial center for needed courtrooms, and if after discussions with all parties, a lease plan is passed by the commission to move forward, your upcoming budget sessions will have to be very bare bonesed, as the payments, I understand, would come from the general budget. Everyone pretty much agreed a bond or opt-out would fail in the current public climate, especially with the increased tax assessments they received and inflation climbing every year. Commissioners, as a taxpayer, I urge you to reject this new FTE position because of the upcoming budget discussions starting next week. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Don Hoffman, four, seven, three, three, one, 273rd Street. I was before the board here a couple of months ago, appealing my property assessment and stuff. And I had it reduced by the board to buy about 50% of what the county wanted to raise me, which was a little over $100,000. So I thought, you know what, I'm going to take it to the state, see what happens. Well, I went, talked to the guys down the hall, and they said, well, nobody's ever appealed it to the state. And I can see why. I need a lawyer. I need a lawyer to go to the state to appeal something that the county has authority over. Now, if this is the case where the left hand of government doesn't know what the right hand of government is doing, it's it. I have to hire a lawyer to appeal a decision that's made by the local county board, which they could have raised my property taxes $200,000. And how much would it cost me to go to PIER or have a hearing before this board in order to get justification? Absolutely makes no sense, people. I mean, it's more political or politics than it is what we should be talking about here. And just that being I sat down, I thought, you know what? I'll pay my $600,000 a year more in taxes, see what happens. But you know what? I will be the first one down here talking when this economy crashes. I was told that I wasn't being realistic on my values and my property. That's fine. I lived through the 17s, 80s, I remember what happened. And I got people telling me that I'm not realistic, and they're not old enough to even remember the 70s and 80s. That's fine. Time will come. History always repeats itself. But, you know, I heard rumors talking about an opt-out, maybe a few suggestions to raise a little more money. You're going to raise a lot of it on the north end of everybody's assessments that's gone up. I mean, I got daughter and son-in-law in Harrisburg, assessments ranging anywhere from 20 up to 100%. There's going to be a lot more money coming from there. I think we've got a good piece of land over by T that maybe we could sell, we're not using. If the value of everything's going up, we should be able to just about double our money off of what we paid on that piece. So, opt-out, I've been through them. When I was on the Harrisburg School Board. You better have your ducks in a row, and you better be very specific of what you're spending your money for. When you spend $1.4 million for a swamp plan, don't come to me and ask for an opt-out, because I'll put the biggest sign there is in my front yard saying no. Just a little concern for the future.
Don, I have a question. When you went to the, is that, you went to appeal this to the state, right?
You had two options to appeal, two different ways to appeal. You go through circuit court, or you go through a hearing board in PIER.
But is that, that situation that occurs, is that something the county has done, or is that something the state has put in place? You know, we can, we get, we're going to get ripped for about everything there is to get ripped for. But on the other hand, let's look at the other shoe, let's look at what state situation and where our state sits and what, they set some of that boundaries. So I think that, I agree with you, is your frustration, I'm not arguing. But I think our state legislatures ought to hear about that too, and want to know why that is. Why do you need an attorney to go appeal to that thing?
I agree with that. I mean, after I went through this process, I thought, you know what, maybe I should have access to my state's attorney. Maybe they should carry this case for me, because it wasn't a county issue, now all of a sudden it becomes a state issue, because we are required by the state to set these limits this way. Okay, so where's, where's my representative as a county resident when I'm going up against the state? Shouldn't I have access to, access to my state's attorney to help me with that? You know, at what point is this, is our state's attorney working for this board, or when are they working for these people? If I went to sue you, who would the state's attorney be representing? If I had an issue with what the county decided to do, whether it's on Nine Mile Creek or my assessments, who would the state's attorney represent? I believe I'm, we're all paying his bill, so we, shouldn't we have access to his ability? I don't know.
Well, Don, I'm not, certainly not an attorney, and I will wander into this swamp, but I'm just going to tell you that if it's your action, it's your action, that's your action. State's attorney works, yes, he does get your, pay for your salary, but in that case, he would be defending, I think, the county of which employs him. I don't know, maybe these guys are, we've got two attorneys on our commission, they know a hell of a lot more than I do.
All I know is, this is what we run into when you try to get something done. I mean, the common sense, everything's referred to the legal system, the legal system. And at some point in time, these two are going to cross.
Thank you, anybody else? If not, any Commissioners have a report? No, all right, we'll move on to regular business. I think Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Aaron's are going to tee up item number one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so over the last several months, what has happened with regard to Lincoln County looking at a new or expanded courthouse space? Several months ago, this county commission put together a citizen board comprised of two Commissioners, two circuit court judges, some building staff here from the county, as well as four different citizens from different walks of life and different geographical areas around the county. And that board was tasked with determining, what are we going to do with regard to this issue that the judges have asked, judges have asked for more space? And in order to accommodate increased case filings and a lot more traffic as it relates to criminal cases and civil case filings. Basically, the determinate, or excuse me, the evidence that was presented to the board is that this county is out of space when it comes to holding court, and we need more courtrooms to be able to accommodate that space. So then the next issue that arose was, how are we going to do that? And, but let me take a step back here. We took a methodical look at each of the departments here in the county, and asked them what kind of space they would need over the next five years, 10 years, next 20 years. And our architects from ARC Inc. worked with them to do a needs assessment. And they also met with the court system, unified judicial system as well. And each of those departments reported back to the architect of the square footage space that they thought they would need over the next five, 10, and 20 years. And we got a report back from that. And that report back to us came back with the fact that we would need 87,000 more square feet in order to handle the business of the county. 87,000 square feet. And so, we held our meetings, we took public input. Mayor Lundstrom from city of Canton was there. There was a pretty much unanimous belief, as well as this state law that says you've got to have your courthouse within the city limits of the county, of the county seat, which is here in Canton. And commission went piece by piece, looked at all of the issues, and it came up with some recommendations with regard to how and where it would expand the courthouse. And we reported out three different recommendations to the county commission the other night. And the first recommendation that was made is that a justice center complex should be constructed west of Canton. And when I say a justice center complex, that means a building that would house sheriff's department, a 911 emergency dispatch center, emergency operations for the county, and the court system. It's where you would build all the new courtrooms at, in addition to the sheriff and emergency 911, emergency operations. And then it would also have office space for the state's attorney's office, as well as the public defender's office. And that amount of space is 87,345. So I'm going to use the number 87,000 square feet. And that's the total square footage, gross square footage, that we think we need in order to accomplish the business of the county moving forward for the next 20 years. Fingers crossed, right? So that's the first recommendation, to build a justice center complex west of Canton. Now while all of this committee was meeting during, during the middle of it, an individual came forward from the city of Canton, who previously lived in the city of Canton, and said they would like to help the county be able to construct and facilitate a new courthouse. Longtime resident, has a lot of loyalty towards the city, wants to do good works for the public, and essentially would serve as a financing agent and developer for the project. So that person came forward and said, I'm going to help you build this building, okay? Now there's no agreement yet, there's no formal lease, but because of that individual's offer, and I think it's a gift, and I'll talk about that right away, the second recommendation from the committee was to, that this commission should authorize our state's attorney to enter into due diligence discussions between the state's attorney's office and this individual. So that's the second recommendation that was made, is that we should enter into due diligence discussions to determine how we could move forward with the construction of the justice center complex with this individual serving as the financing agent and as the developer. And basically, how that would work is, this individual would build the building and then lease it back to us. Pretty straightforward stuff. Now, the third issue, and the reason I say that's a gift, is because you've probably heard a lot of talk at the coffee shop, as well as from others who just came up to the podium, who have said that maybe in the current environment, doing an opt-out may not work. I don't know. I don't know whether an opt-out would work or not, but this individual and their offer allows the county to sidestep the necessity for a opt-out. And instead, it would create a situation where the county would just make an annual lease payment out of its general operating funds. And we'll get more into that, deeper into the weeds, as our state's attorney conducts due diligence discussions with that individual. So more to follow on that. Number three, the third recommendation that was made by the commission. There was extensive discussion at the last committee meeting about this issue of a jail and where Lincoln County's prisoners should be housed. There was one proposal that perhaps, or stated that perhaps a jail construction should be considered as part of this courthouse presentation. That proposal did not receive any support from the committee. It did not receive any support. And instead, the committee decided to create a study group that will look into this issue of whether or not, in the future, Lincoln County should construct a jail and/or a regional jail with other counties in the area. So, that issue was sidestepped. There is, the current plan, or the current recommendation, does not include any discussion of constructing a jail. The committee simply made a recommendation to state that we should study the issue more, okay? So, just so people are clear, just so the public is clear, the current proposal does not, the current recommendation from the committee to this commission does not include construction of a jail. And so, the, if I understand correctly, after the meeting, each of the departments, specifically UJS, went back and talked to the architect about how much more square footage would be needed. And I think Andrew Etrum has some of those numbers. And I think, in my packet here, I'm looking at preliminary project scope and statement of probable construction cost. That 87,000 square foot number is what was reported back to you, right Andrew? Okay, so I'm using the right number when I say 87,000 square feet, right? Okay, got it. Now, with regard to the 87,000 square feet, the estimated building construction cost on that are 28,703,000. So, 87,000 square foot building for $28 million. And then built into that are soft cost and contingency cost, for a total project cost of 34 million. Now just to be clear, so 34 million total for 87,000 square feet. Now just to be clear, it is a private developer and a private person under the proposed plan who would be responsible for constructing the building according to the specifications we give them, and then we would make an annual lease payment to them. So, total project cost, 34 million, total square feet, 87,000. Commissioner Schmidt, you have anything you want to say?
I think you've explained it quite thoroughly.
So I think today, what this commission needs to do is determine, number one, does it want to take up the recommendations made by the courthouse improvement committee? Does it want to adopt them in whole or in part? Does it want to modify those? And does it want to give guidance to our state's attorney's office as how to move forward on this issue?
Are you wanting to make a motion, Commissioner Aaron's?
I am, if you'll entertain one.
I'll entertain one, and then if we can get a second, we can open it for discussion.
Sure. So, my motion would be the following, Madam Chair. That the commission authorize our state's attorney's office to enter into due diligence discussions with Darcy Johnson in order to explore building a justice center complex west of Canton on land that he owns. And then also, second part of my motion is that the commission form a study group to study the concept of building a jail or regional jail in the future, but not with the building of the courthouse.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Commissioner Aaron, I have one question on, on your second part of your motion. If, if Mr. Johnson, we enter into this, and he would decide on his own to want to add that, are we, are we not going to, are we going to say, no, we, we don't want you to add that? But if he, if it's his choice to do that, I'm concerned about the fact that we're limiting his ability to decide. We know what we want. I got your first motion. But if he were to say, well, if I'm doing this, why don't I build something beyond it, because it makes more sense to do it all at once? Are we then not going to accept that, or are we limiting his ability to make that decision?
So a couple of different things, Commissioner Schmidt. Number one, I'm showing loyalty to the courthouse improvement committee. Those are the recommendations that were made. You and I headed that committee up. I'm simply delivering the communication from the committee to this commission and showing loyalty to that process. So that's number one. And so that's why that's my motion, because that's what the committee decided unanimously. Number two, the discussions that I've had with representatives from Mr. Johnson never included any discussion about a jail. Maybe you've had other discussions, or maybe other Commissioners have had other discussions. And so if that's the case, I'd be interested in hearing those discussions. Number three, the people of the county spoke last November, told us they didn't want a jail. And so that tells us that we as elected officials need to retool, re-task, and do more studying on the issue, rather than just ignoring what the people told us what they wanted. Because when they voted down the issue of the jail, they voted down all of the operations and maintenance money that comes with it. And I guess my question is, okay, so if Mr. Johnson does just say, I'm going to build a jail for you guys, my question to you is, where does that money come out of our current general operating fund? We don't have it, as best I can tell. We don't have the operations and maintenance funds to come out of our general operating budget. We're barely going to have the money, barely, we will, but barely have the money to pay for the annual lease payment out of our general operating budget for the courthouse. We're going to be able to make it work, but it's going to require some difficult decisions that elected officials have to make.
I would just say this, I'm not arguing for a jail. But on the other hand, from, looking from a long-term aspect, our lease payments to Minnehaw County range anywhere from 140, and they could climb to highs $180,000 a month. Maybe an exploration, and I'm not advocating right away, but down the road, that money, that two and a half million or $3 million that we spend and send north, we could apply to ourselves by having our own facility at some point in time. But I think, not to dig deep in the weeds, I think our most immediate needs, Commissioner, as you have said, and I'll, I'll vote for your motion, that we need to get courtroom space, because we don't have that. We need to be able to move the trial situation, the crowding that we have. We need to have adequate facilities for our court service officers, and that's our most immediate need, and that's something that we have to get on as quickly as possible. So, the jail situation will continue to be a comment and other things. Is there anybody else from the committee? Larry, do you have any comments on that, if you would?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Just a technical question, I assume it got missed in your motion, but I did not hear you say constructed within the boundaries of the city of Canton.
I left that out, Larry, because as I understand it right now, and I know where you're going, and I agree with where you're going. As I understand it right now, that has, that piece of property that we're talking about, and I could be mistaken, but I thought what I heard from Mayor Lundstrom at the meeting was, that land is not currently within city limits. And so that requires an act of the city council that we have no control over. I mean, I agree with you, what you're saying is, should, should that be within city limits? Yes, I think by state statute, we're required to have it within city limits. But the city council has not acted yet. And so it requires a unit of government, which has its own elected officials. They have to decide whether or not they want that to happen as well.
Fair enough, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Comment, Madam Chair?
Go ahead Commissioner Poppins.
As I agree that we need to do something, and we've needed to do something for quite some time, as we're leasing now space in Minnehaw County, or will be here shortly to accommodate hearings, I think we need to progress. But the same token, I don't know that there's any harm in looking at it at the same time as far as the court and the potential jail scenarios with Mr. Johnson. So, I think that committee can be in conjunction with a negotiation with him to know if he's willing to, and if so, at what lease price. Then we could formally understand the comparison of leasing the space there, or leasing the space from Minnehaw County. So, I think that needs to be in conjunction, so, thank you.
I would agree with that Commissioner Poppins. And I had a couple of short discussions with our auditor about how we're going to make this lease payment, and shifting those costs down to Lincoln County would certainly help, help do that, and also allow us to do other projects that we need to do concerning roads and what have you. Sherri, did you, I mean, are we going to be able to afford this lease payment? Let's say the lease payment's, you know, $220,000 a month or more.
Before I would say for sure, I mean, I'd like to know what the number is.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we can work through the budget to get it to work.
All right.
I mean, I would, the less the better, but obviously.
Yeah, I mean, $34 million divided over the course of 40 years, that's with no interest included on it, and I'm sure there's going to be an interest payment, just a straight division over the course of 40 years, that's 850,000. Now if you add 5% on to that, you're looking at well over a million dollars. That's just some back-of-the-envelope math here. So, those are the kind of rough numbers we're looking at on an annual lease payment, I think.
All right, any other Commissioners want to comment? All right. Any other commissioners want to comment? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
I do have two questions, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
First one, who was the second on that?
Commissioner Gibbons.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. And Commissioner Ehrens, could you repeat the second part of that question about the study group? Or the resolution about the study group?
Yeah, a similar group as to the courthouse improvement committee would be convened to hold public meetings, just like we did with the courthouse improvement committee, to determine the feasibility, the need, all of the different issues that we did with courthouse, figure out all of those issues with regard to the need for a jail or regional jail.
If I may, Madam Chair, I have one question.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Ehrens, do you see a harm in negotiating or finding out Mr. Johnson if he is willing to? So that we can then may have those numbers available for when that group is trying to assess if this makes more sense for us to do it this way or continue the road in which we are traveling now?
Well, it's going to take more time. During our courthouse improvement committee meeting, several of the members took exception with even deviating from two to three weeks with regard to, I had proposed a feasibility study and of the different locations, and some of the members took exception to that. And so, I don't foresee any situation in which we could determine the need for a jail and do all of the public input that's needed to happen within two to three weeks. And that's just putting the cart in front of the horse again. We did that last time with regard to the process that we went through for the jail. And we just shouldn't let that happen again. We, we've been given a gift here. We do not have to go to an opt-out, and we shouldn't squander that gift by getting too greedy and asking for too much. And instead, we should entertain the art of the possible. And that is getting our needs taken care of. And our need at this time is getting a courthouse constructed. And I just don't want a polarizing issue to get involved with and stop the progress from being able to build a justice center. So, I'm just sticking with this issue of studying the concept of a jail or regional jail in the future. Now, if Mr. Johnson wants to offer up construction of a, of a jail, he's certainly welcome to. But I think that's a pig in a poke. And I think we should move forward deliberately, rather than haphazardly. And so, the unanimous conclusion of the committee was to make a recommendation to study the jail, but not to build it.
Madam Chair, we're not going to belabor this, but I know we talked about a regional jail, and many members of the committee, and I'm looking at them right now, had expressed that kind of an interest in that. At, at our southeast district meeting, where we meet periodically, commissioners from six different counties meet and discuss pertinent issues that are on the agenda for all of us, whether it's county officials or commissioners. Prior to that meeting, I think Commissioner Gibbons finally joined us. But prior to that meeting, I talked with, with officials from Clay County and Union County about that feasibility. And they certainly were warming to a regional concept. They wanted to know where it would be located. And that would be the, that would probably be the issue. And I told them that it was a short drive from Vermillion to Canton, and it certainly was a shorter drive from, from Parker here. But I mean, there is something that we could, and that may take time to negotiate and talk about that. So, I think we're, like I said, let's get what we got, what we need, and move forward. Let's call a question.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
The only thing that at this point that troubles me, Madam Chair, is in the words, we sidestepped. I think we're sidestepping the voters' right to vote on an opt-out so they fully understand how their tax money is being sent or spent. I would prefer that the taxpayers vote yes or no on this matter as they have the right to refer previous actions. So although I do agree that we don't have a very good option, I still support that they should have a right to vote on it through the standard funding mechanism, which I believe would, in the end, cost them less.
All right, Sean, you want to go, go ahead and call the question?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item number two, leasing courtroom space in Minnehaha County. Mr. Golden, were you going to handle that?
I believe it's been provided to you, but the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners had sent down a lease for us to lease a courtroom up in Minnehaha County. For some time now, the civil matters in Lincoln County has been actually going up, and a lot of them have been heard in Minnehaha County. And so, since we've been using their facilities, this is a lease to formalize that agreement. They had emailed it down to me. It's before you. It would be leasing a courtroom. We would still be responsible if we did criminal cases up there to transport prisoners. And we would be charged for, I believe it's eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars a month. And the total would be a hundred thousand dollars over a year period of time. And that was the most that they were willing to go out, is a year at this point. And that is the offer that they made. They sent me the calculations where they went through, and they figured out how much it costs them to operate the jail over a period of time, broke out those costs, and came down that a single courtroom roughly costs them a hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain. And they would be passing that cost along to us for the use of that facility.
Is that courtroom going to be dedicated to us? Or will it be shared space with Minnehaha County cases?
My reading of it is, is that they will, it will facilitate Lincoln County cases up there, but I don't think it is necessarily solely a Lincoln County courtroom.
So the price that they've quoted us then is asking for, their calculations are based upon dedicated space versus shared space calculations?
Yes.
So really, maybe we should push back against them and tell them, hey, if it's not dedicated space, and you've given us a dedicated space calculation, you need to come down a little bit on your price, out of all fairness.
I can certainly go back and discuss it with them.
And I think that's the fair thing. You know, I've looked at their calculation. It's expensive to run a courthouse, it's expensive to run courtrooms. They're being generous. At the same time, you know, we're put into this position because an entirely separate branch of government, the judiciary, has told us that's what needs to be done in order to assist them with their docket. And I'm fine with that decision. It's a fair decision. But what wasn't discussed is how it's going to get paid for between the two different counties. And so, I think since both counties have basically been told, this is how it's going to work, and this is what you're going to do, I think that does open the door up for a nego, you know, a negotiation where we shouldn't just have to take it because Minnehaha County said so. You know, they're put in this position because of the judiciary. We're put in this position because of the judiciary. And now what they're saying is, well, you just, you need to do this because you're using our space. And so I think if they're going to use a dedicated space calculation method, and it's not actually going to be dedicated, because they're still going, it's like renting a house and being told, but you still have to allow the landlord to be able to live in it. Well, I'm not going to pay the same rental space, rental amount or lease amount that I would if the landlord still gets to live with me in the upstairs of it. And so, I think we ought to tell them that if it's, here's what I would suggest. At the end of every month, we are given a report of how many cases were actually heard in the courtroom. And then we get a roll-up report that says there were either twenty cases or five cases. And then based upon that space utilization, we send a check to Minnehaha County for the amount of space we actually used.
And I just want to be clear. There hasn't been any negotiations that the judiciary has been involved with on either side. It's just strictly been between the counties.
Right.
The cases have been going up to Minnehaha County, and we haven't been charged for them at this point in time. So, I can certainly go back and discuss that with them.
And it is fair. We do need to reimburse them. You know, no doubt about that. I think the only issue is what's a fair reimbursement model.
Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair? I'd like to have, Judge Homan, would you have a comment on this, please?
I didn't want to call you and put you on the spot.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt, and Chairman Landine. I don't think it's fair or accurate to, and I apologize, Mr. Golden, to refer to this as a dedicated courtroom space. Just over the course of approximately two weeks ago, a Lincoln County civil jury was held in the Minnehaha County courthouse that utilized Minnehaha County court space over the course of eight days. There are also numerous hearings that are held in other civil matters, as well as some in abuse and neglect cases. And we can't specifically identify a courtroom for all of those cases to take place. Due to COVID, we have specific requirements and a commitment that we've made to the community that we're going to handle our jury trials safely. And so there are only certain courtrooms within the courthouse that jury trials can be held. And those are not courtrooms that we additionally hold other civil matters or cases that have routinely been held up there over the course of the last year. So, it's not a dedicated courtroom space, but it's the dedicated time and energy of staff to handle those cases up there. So I don't think, under any stretch of the imagination, Minnehaha County could specifically identify a space to be utilized by Lincoln County. It's certainly at the discretion of the judge who's presiding over that matter to determine what court space is appropriate to facilitate those particular hearings or jury trials. That's the only comment I had. Thank you.
Judge Homan? So in other words, we could be bumped if there is a conflict? Or would there never be a conflict between the two counties that we?
I'm, I'm not saying that you could be bumped. I'm just saying that there are courtroom spaces that are utilized for jury trials. Just like I explained, we had an eight-day civil trial from Lincoln held in Minnehaha County. That's not the same courtroom space that you would use for just a regular civil hearing. So what I'm saying is, it wouldn't be appropriate to say courtroom six B is going to be utilized always for Lincoln County cases. It's at the discretion of the judge who's presiding over that case to determine what is the appropriate courtroom space to use. And so I think the calculation that has been done just approximates the use of one courtroom over the course of each month. And it would just vary which courtroom is actually being used for those proceedings.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I have a question. Mr. Golden, did it, did it appear to you that there was room for a negotiation on any of these points?
We're using their space currently. We've been using their space for a period of time. We don't have room down here for the civil cases if they come back. So, it makes it very difficult to go back to them when they were reluctant to begin with to give us space in their courthouse, because they're short of space as well. So it makes it very difficult to go back, because I don't really have much leverage.
But did they give us the space, or were they ordered to give us the space?
I don't think there was any orders whatsoever. I think that, from my twenty-five years of practice, it is not unusual for one county to allow a case or two to come over if it's going to be convenient for a court. It happens all over the state and everything else. I think that has occurred here as a matter of courtesy between Lincoln County and Minnehaha County. I think it has gotten to the point now where we're no longer, just as a courtesy, using Minnehaha County's courthouse. We are currently doing it because we don't have the facilities down here to handle all the other civil cases.
Yeah, I mean, it's not as if we put, it's not as if each of the parties to these cases ask Minnehaha County every day, can I use your courtroom? It's because the judges said so.
I think the way venue works is that the judges can say, here's an option, but there has to be an agreement between the parties, otherwise it can't occur.
Right. I think we need to go back to Minnehaha County and just say, out of all fairness, we're not always using your courtroom space, so we shouldn't pay the full bill if we're not using full-time.
Madam Chair, the commission had to vote on this. This is not the judicial, the commission. I don't know, it's not a popular decision up there to even do this. When we were in negotiations for the jail, we never negotiated. We were told what we had to pay. That was by the sheriff. So, I'm not, I, I understand, but I think we're quibbling over something here that is a necessity, just like to try to get these cases done. And I don't know whether it's the actual money, how much we intend to save, but I, I keep coming up, and this may be a bad thing, but beggars can't be choosers. In other words, we're, we're at their discretion. Those commissioners were looking, and several comments that I've had from several of theirs commissioners saying, when are you going to grow up and take care of yourself? And all that kind of stuff. So I think that they have, they have extended a courtesy. Yes, it will cost us money, but then what doesn't cost us? Crime is an expensive situation. So, I think what we have to do is get this thing done, get it formally approved, and get, and expedite the process of utilizing what they have provided for us.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think we should turn it down and see how that goes for us. We don't have an option, folks. There's nothing to negotiate. We have no leverage. They turn us down, they say we're not going to allow it up there. You got a judge that's trying to throw things up there, and the court system up there is going to say they don't have space, and we have nothing. This is a gift for them to consider it. I hate to accept that, but that's what it is. Because we haven't acted quickly enough to get something done. As, as commissioners up there have said, when are we going to grow up? It's time for us to take action, take our own destiny, and, and get through this year, year and a half, until we are two years or three years, and get this done, so.
Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item three. Sean, you want to go ahead and read that?
This is the second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County to regulate medical cannabis within Lincoln County.
This is the second reading on a ordinance for medical cannabis and marijuana. I did go back in, and there was certain things that were left out. There were some discussions from the last meeting that I did include, which is, there is now a provision that would allow, if Amendment A goes through, for this to regulate that as well. I did go through and accept, or place in there, the dollar amounts are the same for a liquor license for a license here. There's also an ordinance that's coming up for the commission, I believe, concerning future liquor license, and that the total for Lincoln County will be eleven. And so for facilities, I included that in here as well, for a starting point. And then also went ahead and filled in the amounts concerning what a civil fine would be if people were to violate so that the commission would have the options of seeking a. if people were to violate, so that the commission would have the options of seeking during licensing issues, whether or not you wanted to put some sanctions on the individual, or possibly fine them if they weren't following the provisions. And so, I chose $1,000 at that point for a maximum fine. And I also included a provision in there that the license is non-transferable. However, an owner of a business could give priority to someone else applying if they were going to sell their business. Then, the renewal fee, I set at the same level as the one that we have in our ordinance for alcohol, which would be $10,000. And then, finally, if there is any violations by an individual on this, the county does have the ability to set civil fines. I set that at $100. So, since those, I would consider to be fairly substantial changes to this, we would need a second reading and a second public meeting, and that would be on July 6. So, this would still be scheduled, I believe, advertised as a public meeting as well as, at this time. But we'll need a second one on July 6. Any questions?
If we're gonna, if we decide to do that, do we need to hear from the public today, or do we wait until the next go-around?
I don't.
How would you like to handle it?
I would like to have the public hearing here today and then hear what it has to say, if you have changes. If you want to have amendments, then you could direct me to do so, and we would deal with it at the next meeting. And depending on how substantial those changes are, we may have to have a hearing after that.
Commissioners?
Mr. Golden, if we are part of the group that's going to talk about Minnehaha, Lincoln, and the city of Sioux Falls, looking at an ordinance, would that allow preclude, if there was to try to find a unified one that was a blanket situation that would affect all three jurisdictions?
I have been in discussion with some of the other state attorneys and attorneys around this. We have been floating these back and forth between the group. This is an ordinance. You have the ability to change it. You can repeal it and put in a uniform one, if you wish to do that. I believe, I mean, on this, it would require that the state has to have an application out there in order for the marijuana establishment to be in place. You have a ordinance coming up for planning and zoning, which required the same thing. So, we would still have time to go back and revisit this.
Okay. Well, I think that, talking to other commissioners from just around our district, many of them have put in place an ordinance. There's no consistency in any of them. I mean, they're all over the board. And, you know, we're entering some pretty new territory. And that's what concerns me, is that the inconsistency from one county to another, or one municipality to another, leads to confusion on the part of the public. So, I don't, I'm not opposed to what you've done. I think we're fine. I think I'd like to hear from the public as to what they have to say, but also with the mind that maybe some kind of uniform situation that the state may have to come up with, that we have better than a hodgepodge of different regulations and ordinances that affect the sale of that.
Are you, are you on the task force?
Yes.
I know you are. I'm talking to Mr. Golden.
No, he is too.
According to Mr. Commissioner Schmidt, I will be attending.
Okay. That meeting's tomorrow morning. All right. Well, since this is a second reading in public hearing, I'll ask anybody in favor of this ordinance if they'd like to approach. You need to state your name and address, please.
Good morning. I am Emmett Reistroffer. I reside at 1905 South 7th Avenue in Sioux Falls. Not yet a resident of Lincoln County, but hope to be soon, and hope to do business here as well. So, I am here today in support of the ordinance. I believe this is very monumental for some of us who have been involved in this, myself, close to 12 years. When I was growing up, I had learned that medical cannabis helped my grandmother get through her cancer treatment. Today, I did invite some patients to make it. So, they're here just attending to kind of witness history in the making, more or less, because we've been waiting for this moment. So, I'm going to try my best to speak on their behalf of their best interests, as well as just the public as a whole. I do come from the cannabis industry. I believe I've had some conversations with some of you, the planning commission, staff, and have offered some recommendations. So, today, I think this ordinance really moves in the right direction, but there's still just a couple parts of it that I think need to be rounded out just a little bit better. And there's some points of concern I wanted to raise. I did send an email out last night. So, you have a written copy. I'll just kind of verbally summarize what I'm looking at. So, first, I think the best part of this is that it does work with state law, I believe. I've been looking at about a dozen cities and counties. I don't see any drastic conflicts with state law. When state rules come out, I don't think you'll have to make a lot of major changes. But just to get ahead of some issues, you know, a couple minor issues, I guess. How daycares are listed in there concerns me just because that's not defined. So, we're not quite certain what is an in-home daycare and what's eligible for an in-home daycare. Could that open up a big debate? So, I think that should either be removed or just better defined. And state law, just to remind you, does prevent our businesses from being located within 1,000 feet of any public or private school. The holiday provision also, I thought, was kind of unfair. I'm not sure what we're trying to achieve there. My experience in other states, we do operate on many holidays. We also close on holidays. We choose to close on Christmas and Easter. But take Veterans Day, for example. We usually take advantage of that to do events with our veteran affiliates, and to provide them discounts and certain, just special treatment on that day. And they tend to come out in big numbers. So, we would ask for more flexibility on holidays and making sure hours of operation are flexible, too. I'm not sure where that ended up, but hoping to stay open till about 10:00 PM at night to accommodate different schedules. So, bigger, bigger issues, though, those are fairly minor. The licensing caps, I really can't emphasize enough the risk that Lincoln County is taking by capping licenses. I know that state law permits the city and county to do that. There certainly are examples of where that's done, and there's pros and cons to any type of policy. I have fallen on the side of, I've worked in markets where there's license caps. I've worked for companies that benefit from them because it kind of skyrockets the value of your license. So, I'm really against it personally, though, because I see the problems it creates from a public standpoint. You may think capping licenses keeps this a smaller market. You can have better control of it. But really, what happens is, if you look at, there's a Cato Institute study, a Pew Trust study, a number of studies, and hundreds of news articles across the nation on what happens. It really breeds corruption and cronyism. The government has to get into the business of picking and choosing who gets licenses, and ultimately, that can lead to litigation. If your process isn't bulletproof, some of these big companies will come in with teams of attorneys that will just pick apart whatever licensing process is in place. And oftentimes, they're successful, and that's why I worry about that. Honestly, the number you set, I think, is fine. I don't even think we'll have that many businesses necessarily in the first year. But when you have that process, and some people win and some people lose, it just leads to a whole host of issues. And mainly litigation, and sometimes that is successful. And we've seen public officials get caught up, unfortunately, in behavior they shouldn't have been. Definitely not suspecting that Lincoln County would engage in that. But as a whole, I oppose this policy in whatever county it's proposed, a licensing cap. But like I said, I still support the ordinance. I think 99% of this is moving us in the right direction. It's just some of those technical details. Other than licensing caps, the other most important point that I'll end with is vertical integration. What that means is a cannabis business grows the plant, processes it, and turns it into products, and sells it at the retail level. So, think of a craft beer brewery, essentially, that brews the beer, bottles the beer, and then sells it, or puts it in a keg and sells it at their taproom. Why that's important and why it's become the standard nationwide, there's only one or two states that don't allow it. The majority of states allow it, and even many states require it. And it's about public safety. From a business standpoint, I do love it because it makes us more efficient, gives us able, ability to consolidate our operations under one building, which can help us drive down prices for patients, increase quality, increase inventory controls, share staffing, things like that. It's just a better business model. But from a public safety standpoint, that means less cannabis being driven around the county. If I have to grow it on plot A over here on the south side of the county, and then I have to process it on plot B on the north side of the county, then I'm driving that cannabis multiple times a day. So, that just increases the chance for diversion, for crime, and increases costs. And I don't really know what we benefit by forcing, by not allowing us to vertically integrate. And how I read the ordinance today, it does say you're limited to only one license. What I suggested is saying, limiting us to only one license of each license type. So, then, I can still have a cultivation and manufacturing and a dispensary license all at the same time. That's that vertically integrated model. If the goal is to prevent monopolies or one group from controlling the whole market, I wholeheartedly support that. I'm here to really represent local, small businesses, not the big guys from out of state. So, I think limiting us one license per license type allows more of a variety of people to get involved, but still to have that model of being able to grow it, process it, and sell it. So, last, I'm available to answer any questions based on my experience. I've worked in all these facilities, and I'm just happy to tell you more if there's any part of this you want to learn more about, whether that's today or later. I'm always available. I'm just a phone call away. And today, I'd be happy to talk more about those points that I raised. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the ordinance? I would just ask you to not repeat what's already been said, if you can help it.
Yeah, for sure. All right. My name's Ned Horstedt. I'm born and raised in Lincoln County, outside of Harrisburg, my entire life. Just a few things, and it's kind of difficult to be in the meeting model where it's support or oppose when there's slight changes to be made. So, overall, I want to thank you for taking this on. I'm actually also the executive director of the Cannabis Industry Association, which is a trade group of cannabis businesses in the state and entrepreneurs. I want to thank Lincoln County, very forward-thinking, and, you know, if this passes, it will be likely a template for many other counties. We've been keeping an eye on what's going on in the state, and there's a lot of people that are just kind of kicking the can down the road. And I think that this approach is preferred. To the talk about the joint committee with Sioux Falls, just being a resident of the county, you know, I grew up on an acreage. I don't think that Sioux Falls should really speak to what people can and can't do in rural Lincoln County. So, having your own ordinance, I think, is a preferred way to go forward. A few things on this particular ordinance. Places of operation, not to repeat what Emmett said, but including in-home daycares, I think, is a little problematic unless there's a registry of in-home daycares. It's a problem for businesses if you don't know where in-home daycares are. Also, there's a piece in there about private schools. I wasn't sure if that includes homeschool. It just opens a whole can of worms there, so I would consider striking those. Permit caps are not ideal. There is a tendency in the new cannabis ordinances to draw a parallel to liquor licenses. And I think that the way that the liquor license system works in the state is pretty terrible. I mean, you have government creating a commodity and a secondary market for these licenses, and that's something that we have the opportunity to avoid when it comes to this new industry. There's a piece in there that, and this is just a question, certifying that at least one officer, board member of the establishment, is a resident of the county. Being from the county, I like it. I hope that legalized have looked at that. I know that in the state law, there's a provision that you must be a South Dakota resident to do this. So, I assume you can do it at the local level, but it's interesting. I haven't seen that in a lot of other places. I think it's really important also, what Emmett said, on one license in the jurisdiction of the same type in the industry. A lot of times, you'll have vertical integration, so people, or businesses, will be able to grow it. They'll be able to process it. They'll ultimately be able to sell it. So, inserting that, I think, is critical. On the licensing fee, the text of the law in the state, I think, is important to bring up here. 3420G60 says, "A local government may require medical cannabis establishment to obtain a local license permit or registration operate, and may charge a reasonable fee for the local license permit or registration." 3420G72-10A, "Application fees for medical cannabis establishments at the state level may not exceed $5,000." So, I think if the state's charging $5,000 and you're charging $175,000 or whatever, reasonable may open you up to some litigation. I think that's about it on this particular ordinance. So, yeah, I'm here for questions as well. And again, I commend you for moving forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in favor? If not, I'll take anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance. All right. I don't know. I guess we're gonna, you want us to have these discussions on changes we want to make? You want to do that today?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Golden, can you come back up to the podium, please? So, and I'm not, I'm not going to get in this nitpicking the ordinance as far as the language, but what about the daycare definition? I mean, I can totally see that as being an issue. How are they supposed to know, a licensee's supposed to know, if somebody has an in-home daycare? They're calling themselves an in-home daycare?
We can go ahead and add definition to it. We could define it as a state-licensed daycare. And so, that would be something that was documented.
Okay. And is there any documentation of homeschooling?
The homeschooling, we were, we were not intending to include homeschooling. We're intending for public or private schools, but not homeschooling. That was not the intention.
Is that going to specifically be excluded, then, within the ordinance, so that there's no?
I don't know that homeschooling would fall within a public or a private school.
Okay.
For the definition.
I don't know either.
I wouldn't read it that way.
Okay.
That was not the intention.
And then, I don't know, on the holidays, I guess, what was the thought on holiday, on the holidays?
The holidays was on one of the models that were being passed around. I believe I picked this one up, or a portion of this, from the State's Attorneys Conference that was being worked on. It is one of the ones that has been adopted, or being adopted, in the other counties. So, the idea behind that just merely was limiting the times on certain holidays, or all holidays, in order to have the establishments open. So, it's up to the commission if you want to keep that or not.
Right. What are the thoughts of the commission on the holidays?
Bill, you kind of approached the drafting of this document through the lens of liquor licenses.
Yes.
And I fully appreciate that from the standpoint of, we need a template. We need to be able to attach the regulations contained herein to, you know, reasonable government regulations. I get that. I mean, I disagree with some of it. I think medical cannabis is medicine. And the only reason you get to use it is because you go to a doctor. And so, I somewhat disagree with, you know, filtering all of the regulations through the liquor license process. But, and as I understand it, under South Dakota state law, counties are allowed to pass, when it comes to liquor licenses, counties are actually allowed to restrict the number of days on the sale of liquor, more than what the state law says you can, right?
That's my recollection.
Yeah, that's my recollection, too. And here in Lincoln County, do you know what days were prohibited from selling liquor?
No, off the top of my head, I do not.
I don't think that we've adopted a more stringent ordinance than what the state allows. And I think, what if I'm not mistaken? And I think, what if I'm not mistaken, doesn't state law also say? Yes, we have.
We don't have any better restrictions.
Yeah, so we're unrestricted. So what we're actually doing here is, and I understand where you're coming from, Bill, I'm not criticizing you. What I'm, all I'm saying is, is if this is a process that should be looked at as the provision of medicine, as opposed to the provision of liquor, we ought to be a little more open with regard to the holiday issue. You know, if you want to restrict, like, Christmas Day, because doesn't state law restrict Christmas Day? I don't know, there's something like that. But I think we need to be a little more open with regard to the holiday issue. Because, for example, you ought to be able to get your medicine when you need it. Now liquor, you don't need liquor. But if you need your medicine, you ought to be able to get it on a holiday if you need to. That's my view.
Well, the intention here was to put something on paper for you to tell me what you want.
Absolutely, and that's why I'm not criticizing you.
I guess I'd like to see the holidays come out. I mean, I, that it just follow the state. I mean, if it's Christmas, you know, but I'm not even that concerned about that. So, I don't know. What's everybody else's thoughts? Take the holidays out? I say take the holidays out. Nobody's jumping up now and saying, "No." I guess I'd like to see that draft.
Do you want to do that as a motion to have me remove that? Or you want me just to redraft and bring it back at our next one on July 6th?
And that's what we're doing, right? So, yes.
Let's redraft.
The next item that was brought up was the cap on the licenses. And I'm kind of in the same, have the same thoughts. I mean, if you cap the licenses, I mean, you're capping competition and the market forces. So I don't, I guess I'm not a fan of the caps. I don't know what the thought process is there, but maybe you have an answer for that.
The answer there was, it was modeled after the alcohol. The alcohol caps, and therefore we can...
That's what I thought. What's everybody's thoughts on the cap?
Dumb question. Okay, so I know, I think it was Ned, or somebody said, you know, they didn't favor that. And I know Commissioner Aaron's has expressed that same thing to me. But I'm questioning, alcohol was set. Why didn't, why didn't we open that up as well? I mean, you know, because I think the thing that, we're talking medical today, and I'm waiting for the Supreme Court to come out and say that recreational is going to be approved because I think that has been approved by the voters as well, which will change substantively your ordinance here. So are we just going to throw that wide open? That anybody that wants to start selling this stuff? You can. And why hasn't liquor, if it's wrong, why hasn't it been contested in the courts and changed?
I'm not going to get into the history of how we came up with our alcohol laws because that's long and tortured. As far as the numbers go, I mean, in some ways, it may actually just not really be much of an issue on the simple fact that there are only so many locations in the county that will be zoned that allows for the businesses to begin with. So some of that is going to be a restriction in and of itself.
Okay.
And it's simple economics. One, if you cap it, it does make the license more vulnerable or valuable for those who receive it. If you're going to just open it up for anyone, then it's going to make it less valuable. And so it'll affect what you want to charge for your fee, I would assume. Commission's choice.
Well, that's my thought, get rid of the cap.
I agree.
Don't get me started on marijuana. Please. The rules and similarities to alcohol, which is not any worse or better. We have a rule that has a cap at this point. Unless I, I haven't found a reason why we had to remove the cap on alcohol. At this point, I'm still in favor of keeping a cap on it. And I'm not sure that it's right or wrong, it's just the way I feel at the moment.
So what, what's the consensus? I mean, how do, what do we want? We need to get a draft of this thing done, so I'm for no caps.
I think you have three no caps, for sure.
Do I, do we? I don't know, I don't know.
The cap on the alcohol comes from the Department of Revenue, and they base it on the population.
Right.
So, I mean, our census is going to go up. So right now, we don't even have anybody taking the eleven alcohol beverage licenses that we have.
Do we have available beverage licenses here in Lincoln County right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses, right. I say we do away with the caps, only because I'm looking at this through the perspective of medical cannabis. I'm not even talking about recreational. I understand our ordinance for a time period may encompass that, but I'm simply looking at this through the need of getting medicine to people to make lives better. That's how I'm looking at this right now. May have entirely different perspective on recreational.
If we're going to have a difference consideration for recreation, yeah, there's no issue with me in medical marijuana. But I don't know that we're going to have, is that going to be a separate dispensary or not?
So why can't we draft it? So we can draft it that way, right? No cap on medicinal, cap on recreational for right now?
Yes, I could redraft it that way.
Do we have some consensus on doing that?
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that? Joel, you're nodding your head?
Yes. So, for if, we refer that solely for if Amendment A stays. Do you want the same numbers on the caps, which is equal to alcohol license? Or would you want a different number?
Well, I think they're two separate things. I mean, me personally, I don't know why we don't do two separate ordinances, one for this and one for this. But I, I don't have a strong feeling about it one way or the other.
The other consideration is, is that I assume that if somebody gets a medical marijuana license and it becomes recreational, they'll want to probably sell that as well, or that's a definite possibility. So treating them both separately may not make much sense.
It may get mooted out by the Supreme Court's decision. But responsible government is responsive government. And so we've got to move forward with the will of the voters today, right now. We don't know when another branch of government is going to make its decision. It could be June 30th, could be December 30th. But we're not going to pattern our decisions. You know, we've got pretty clear guidance from the voters here, how to move forward.
I will try to put language in there for not limiting medical dispensaries and putting a cap on recreational.
Let's see, then we had, the issue was brought up about, you know, if it's one license, but one license per type, so that they can be vertically integrated. We don't have that option, we don't have that in this ordinance, correct?
I will make sure, if you don't, if you want the ability for them to be vertically integrated, tell me, and I will make sure that's possible. If you don't want that, then I will do the same.
I would be in favor if they have the ability to do the integration. I would like that.
Yeah, I think it's important. You know, the legislature took, what, two or three years just to get craft breweries approved? You know, just so you can make, drink a beer where they make a beer? Well, shouldn't the glaucoma patient be able to consume a brownie where she purchases it from?
Catchy, doesn't allow it.
Right, I get it.
Can't do it on facility.
I get it. But the issue's going to become, can I at least make it where I sell it? And we're going to create all kinds of costs to the industry, which increases cost to consumers if we're forcing them to produce in one place and dispense in another. And then the other issue becomes is safety. This is an all-cash business. Now, I was at the State Bar Conference last week. Brent Oftal gave a really good presentation about banking, medical, or cannabis dollars. The State Division of Banking is providing guidance suggesting that banks, federally regulated banks, can bank marijuana dollars. But it requires a whole host of regulatory hoops and hurdles to follow. But the State Division of Banking is telling banks, you can do this. The problem is, from a business perspective, banks may not want to undertake the very expensive process that it takes to do that. And so I foresee a situation where you're going to have a lot of greenbacks floating around in the economy here, which creates law enforcement issues. And if we can contain that within one site, rather than having to transport both product and dollars around, I think you're solving a lot of problems by doing that.
So we want to allow for the vertical integration as long as it's in conformance with the state?
Yes.
Yeah.
Laws? And then we've had some discussions about the licensing fee. What do we want to charge? I mean, I, well, I was talking to one of the commissioners in Minnehaha County, and I know we discussed that $5,000. And so I think that's going to be a topic of conversation at this task force meeting tomorrow, certainly, on how to do that. And what is a reasonable fee?
I think $175,000 is reasonable. But I would do something very similar to North Dakota, and I would break it up over the course of two years. It allows small businesses to be able to compete in the marketplace we're in. The thing to understand is, there is going to be substantial cost to the county to regulate the marketplace. We're talking, you know, having people come in about fire suppression systems and odor and nauseous, nauseous odor, you know, HVAC systems. Well, who pays for all that? The thing is, and this is what I want people in the industry to understand, I want to send this message, counties do not have sales tax dollars to draw upon to fund the regulatory measures we need to do this. We don't have sales tax dollars. And we got to build a courthouse out there, too. Well, I'm not going to sacrifice medical cannabis issues here and a courthouse when we've got the opportunity to draft this the way that we're allowed to under state statute. We need those dollars in order to be able to make, get the industry off the ground in the first place. Because here at the county level, we're limited to property tax dollars. We cannot do the regulations we need to do under the state statute if we don't charge an application fee. Now, you know, am I set on 175? No, I'm not set on that. Do I think 5,000 is too low? Yes, I do. Do I think the state statute limits counties? No, I don't, not from a fair reading of the statute. It says we're allowed to charge a reasonable rate. See, if you put in one statute that the state says 5,000, but then if you put in another statute that says reasonable, it means that the voters intended to allow counties to be able to charge something other than the 5,000. That was what the voters intended us to be able to do. Reasonable, we can guide off of, you know, other application fees that we have in the counties to be able to do that, just like the annual renewal fee, you know, 10,000. There are costs. There's regulatory cost. We don't have sales tax to draw upon. We've got to be able to do this. And it seems pretty standard in other states that have done this, to charge these multi-thousand-dollar application fees, multi-thousand, tens of thousands, multi-thousand, tens of thousands, renewal fees. So I'm comfortable with it. Maybe we break it into two years like North Dakota did, though.
Commissioner Aaron's, would that be renewable, then, every two years? Or a one-time fee, then you're saying?
No, I think you pay a one-time fee to get off the ground, to launch, and then there's an annual renewal fee.
Of any idea on what that would be?
Well, you know, Massachusetts charges 2.5% of gross income, okay? And I'm not saying, I'm not saying South Dakota should take its key from Massachusetts. I'm just saying, that's one of the options that's out there.
So it's based on the revenue generated?
It could be. That's one way of looking at it, or you could just set a fixed fee on it.
What, when you talk about a reasonable fee, and you threw out $175,000, I don't mind the two-year payback. But I'm wondering, since, since you've enumerated very clearly the responsibilities the county has, and the limited resources that we have to follow, because this is another add-on. This is like, you know, one of those unfunded mandates that we get from the state, where you'd be responsible for it, but you had no means of adding revenue to take care of all those responsibilities. What happens if we would jack this thing to $250,000 to be paid over two years?
Can you find any, point taken. Can you find any support around the country for that? You know, for example, one of the city councilors from Sioux Falls said, "Well, why don't we just charge half a million?" And I think he was just being flippant. But the point is, I think you get to the point where it becomes unreasonable. Where does it become unreasonable? I don't know. Can you find support for that dollar amount in other states around the country? And I don't know if you can. I think, I think 175 is around the top end, but...
Has that, has that been researched? So we have quantifiable evidence that that is a number that other states have used, our other counties have used? I mean, I don't know, I haven't done any, I don't know.
I don't know either. I think I'd like...
But I mean, if we're going to go to the two-year thing, I don't, I don't have a heartburn with that. But if we're going to go for two years, I think, well, then I'm, I'm looking at the quarter of a million dollars because that's $125,000 a year. Well, okay, if you got that over two years, as opposed to what it was. But anyway, I can't, I don't know. I don't have any research, haven't done that, haven't had time.
I, I think we need to be careful. This is not a money grab. Again, you can't get too greedy with the people's business. Can't get too greedy. You can be reasonable. You could set it up, you could set up a situation where you pay 50% of the license fee at the time you tender your application, and then you got to pay the other 50% before, the day before you go into business. Okay, I could see that happening. I think that's pretty similar to North Dakota. The dollar amount, you know, I just, I think when you're getting above 175, you're, you're getting pretty greedy.
I don't know that it's greedy. I'm just looking out for the, I can, I can wrap myself in the flag and say, "I'm looking out for the taxpayers of Lincoln County for the responsibilities they have." And this is one means by which we have some money that we can come in to cover our costs. And if they wish to come in and do business, they're obviously going to have some profit potential on this thing. So I hold out for a higher amount over a two-year period, just so we have something to put in our coffers to cover our expenses.
Well, maybe we can satisfy your concerns by recovering those dollars on the back end of an annual renewal fee. So, for example, if you set too high of a fee on the front end, you're only going to end, you're not going to end up with small businessmen and women going into business. You're going to end up with nationwide corporate interest who control the marketplace. And I think, at the local level here, we like to support small business people, whatever that small business may be. And so if you make your fee too high, you're going to push small business people out, and you're going to be stuck with big mega-conglomerate corporate interest. And I think you can balance all that. I think you recover those fees on the back end through a renewal fee.
You know, Commissioner, I, I don't, one more comment. I don't disagree with what you say. I just like the idea that we're having a good and honest and open discussion for the public to understand how county... public to understand how counties get to have the responsibility of this and try to cover our costs. That's my concern. So if you can cover it on the back end, that's fine. But I still am looking at what our obligations are, what it's going to cost, and how we're going to finance that.
So why don't, just for today's discussion, why don't we leave it at the 175, and then we'll have the task force? That's still something we could change at the next reading, the fee. Correct?
Yes, I will, if you would like, I will draft some language and just bring it separately.
Okay.
Or if you want to have it paid over two years.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I say just one other thing on that? Since it's not clear, the Board of the Association put guidance to the Department of Revenue, Department of Health to make these fees refundable. I know that's how it works in Lincoln County, anyway, but like, if you're not granted a license, this county shouldn't just be collecting fees. I wanted to kind of throw that out there as an idea.
That was the intention.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So we're going, do we need a motion today, Bill, or we're just going to table this until you bring us a new draft? Or schedule a second meeting, second reading?
Yes. Just, I think if you table it at this point in time, I will go back and make the changes. We'll publicize it, and we'll do it at the second reading, July 6.
All right.
Motion to table, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Until July 6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Go ahead, move on to item five.
Are we not on four?
Oh, I'm sorry, four.
Toby.
Scratch that.
This is the second reading in public hearing for a temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero.
Go. Yes.
Toby Brown, representing county planning. I'll start out by saying this isn't based on the liquor laws, so we can skip past some of that stuff.
Okay.
So what's proposed before you this morning is the second reading, public hearing for a temporary ordinance amending your zoning ordinance. And so on July 1, 3420G becomes effective in the state, medical cannabis. Within that statute, there are specifically four uses that are identified: cultivation, dispensaries, testing, and processing facilities. So what we've done with this ordinance is taken those four uses and incorporated them temporarily into the Lincoln County zoning ordinance. Specifically, and I'll be brief as I can with this, but specifically would be amending your A1 agricultural district to allow a permitted special use, which would be cannabis cultivation facility. And establishing under that would be some standards. Primarily, I'll jump through some of these, but first and foremost, they would have to present the department with a medical card licensure from the State Department of Health, which we're anticipating would be sometime in early November would become effective. And then it'd be incorporating the setback. So within 3420G, there is an established setback for the licensure cards of 1,000 feet from a public-private school. This draft would add daycare center. So to answer your earlier questions, no, we don't monitor in-home daycares, because those are permitted uses, home occupations. Daycare centers, we do require a conditional use permit, so we do have an understanding of where those are within the county. And then basic things as far as making sure that who is working in the facilities of a certain age, and that the facilities have security plans, operational plans, and those different types of things. And so then that would be within the A1 agricultural district. Within the commercial district, which is Section 6 of your zoning ordinance, it would be amended temporarily to allow the dispensaries within there. And again, same types of requirements as far as setbacks and things like that. This would require an hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m. for the dispensary operations. And then same types of requirements as far as submittal of plans and operational plans. And then within Section 703, which is the light, I-1 light industrial district, we would add cannabis testing facilities, same types of requirements of hours of operation and setbacks, cannabis cultivation facilities, we would allow grow operations within our I-1 light industrial districts. And then also the cannabis product manufacturing facility. And that's the, you know, the conversion of the actual product to other types of products. And so, and I'll quickly answer the question. Vertical integration has not defined within here. These are all permitted special uses. If a particular property wanted to do vertical integration, it would flip it to a conditional use permit. So while it's not specifically stated in here that allows vertical integration, that is a possibility, because we would flip it to a conditional use. And so, as was mentioned at the first reading, is that staff presented two versions to the Planning Commission. The first would be the model that many entities in our area have adopted, and that's what they call a pause button, but would more and more appropriately be called sort of a stop on the process. This is not what this version was recommended the Planning Commission would do. What this version, if adopted today, would allow on July 1, someone to submit a building permit application for a structure or for a new structure in the county, but meeting these requirements, but not being able to receive an occupancy or a use until such time as they can present to our department the medical licensure from the state. So again, this would be a temporary ordinance. Under state statute, this would be effective for up to a year, and could be extended for up to two years. I think that gives the county the flexibility to address any changes that might come down the road as far as state statute. I don't believe the state licensure that takes effect in November will be earth-shattering changes within what's already defined in state statute. But I think we always have the possibility that the legislature could take on additional changes or additional restrictions. This ordinance would allow us to adjust and to modify in accordance with that, with anticipation that at some point in time, the county board of commissioners would fully enact this as more than just a temporary ordinance. But with that, we'd have to answer any questions that you have for staff in relation to this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Toby, did you create an infographic similar to like you did with the CAFOs, where we can see where in the county the uses would be permitted?
So I'll summarize that. There, this ordinance applies to the unincorporated areas of the county. As of this time, right now, there are no public or private parochial schools in the unincorporated area. At this time, we have, I believe, four daycare centers. So the map of it is really...
Wide open.
Wide open. Correct.
Any other questions for staff? If not, is there anybody in the audience or appearing that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Hello again. Nice work to Toby on putting this together. There's a...
Can you just state your name and address again?
Ned Horstedt, 27058, South Southeastern Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think this is an excellent ordinance. There's a few changes that I would recommend from an industry standpoint, and I would have had this at planning and zoning when I was here for that meeting, but it took me a while to dig through the county ordinances to figure out what was relevant, where, anyway, under commercial, currently, it's dispensary only. I would add testing to that. Like, if you look at, for example, Ag Lab Express in Sioux Falls, that's in a commercial area. There's probably a few commercial areas that could benefit from a testing facility. I would add that to commercial. On ag, it's currently cultivation only. I would consider adding product manufacturing to that, to the point that was made earlier about being able to, you know, make brownies or whatever where it's grown. Light industrial, the only thing missing is dispensary. If you add that, it would allow, if you think of like craft brewers, basically full vertical integration, people would be able to buy at that location. And, yeah, you covered the daycare center thing. I'm comfortable with that now. The only other thing is the co-location, which I think is covered if you add dispensary and light industrial, full vertical integration. So again, commercial, I would add testing. Ag, I would add product manufacturing. And light industrial, I'd consider adding dispensary. Other than that, it's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in favor?
Hi, Emmett Reisstrafer again, 1905 South 7th Avenue in Sioux Falls. I'll try not to repeat Ned, so I just want to clarify a couple points and then maybe questions. So based off the discussion from the last ordinance, I'm pleased that the vertical integration is, you know, something that you're open to. We certainly think that is the best route. So I would just, I don't know if this is a question or a point, but I just want to make sure this ordinance doesn't prohibit that as well. I think a past version had said something about not having multiple licenses at the same location, so I'm not sure if that's still in there or not. So that's just a question, just to clarify that the vertically integrated business with all three license types, cultivation, manufacturing, or retail, could be located on the same site. That's very important to me. And testing labs are kind of the exception from that. We can't have common ownership, so I'm not really too concerned where they're at. Also, don't really anticipate too many, probably two labs in the whole state will serve the whole market, to be honest. So I'd be surprised if they, if they, if there's a rush for testing labs. But just allowing those other three license types on the same site, I think light industrial is probably the best zone for all of those, but the more flexibility you provide us, the better, I think, to make sure we get a suitable location and that we're not forced into an area where maybe we're not compatible with the neighbors or something like that. I think of the industrial park off of I-29 South as you're heading into T. There's, you know, an antique store, a gas station, a restaurant, commercial activity right alongside industrial activity. And I think it's a great area. It works. Looks like the highway's being expanded to accommodate that type of development. I think that's really where our industry could thrive, too. So just asking for mindfulness around that flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in favor? If not, anybody here to speak in opposition? Commissioners, what do you want to do? There were some suggestions made. Toby, do you have any response or comment on?
You know, the vertical integration's covered by flipping it to a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Those additional uses within those additional districts would require an amendment. And so what I would suggest is you adopt this version today, and then as we go through future amendments, we would get that done.
Okay. All right. We've heard the request. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Toby, I'm going to assume that when you were drafting this, you were kind of taking the same path that Bill Bulven was, trying to get something off papers, you could see it and then discuss it. And where I'm going with that is, I mean, is there a hard and fast opposition to testing commercial zones areas? Or is that just something you put on paper and would generate a discussion?
I think really it's how we look at our current climate with what's zoned commercial and what's zoned light industrial in the county currently, and the facilities that those facilities are. The processing and some of the cultivation, and I'm not an expert by any means in any of this, but would require some additional security and building things that currently don't exist in some of our commercial properties, such as fire suppression, some of those different types of things. So I'd want to make sure that as drafted now, it gives us the flexibility to really take a look at all of those components. If we were within a city, it would be easy to say, yes, we could do vertical integration in our commercial districts. In the county, it's a little bit difficult, because those properties weren't really designed for that type of a use. So I think at this time, I'm comfortable with the drafted. I don't disagree that there's going to have to be some changes and modifications down the road with some of those things, and as we get more familiar with some of the operations. But from a zoning standpoint, a use standpoint, we want to try to keep commercial uses, commercial, industrial-type uses, industrial.
My last question is, with regard to this issue of vertical integration, because I can understand what the industry guys are saying. They're saying, okay, I may be able to get these licenses, on one hand, from the auditor's office, but then I've got to come to planning and zoning, and they could effectively, or this commission, could effectively veto that through the zoning process. And I think what they're trying to say is, they want to have multiple uses in one location as a special permitted use, as opposed to a conditional use, because a conditional use is subject to the whims of the commission. Because then it has to come to the five of us to vote on, and it's no longer a special permitted use, which is basically, you check the box, you get the permit. So, and I'm not saying I'm for one way or another yet, but is there a grounding or a basis for doing the multiple-use sites as a conditional use permit in other states? Or is that just something you created on your own?
So I'd answer that. I think it's the same vice versa. The Planning Commission could issue a conditional use permit, and the licensure could be denied by the board of commissioners. I think from really from the vertical integration part of it, is you're talking about commercial uses, industrial-type uses, that really from the standpoint that the public should be involved in those, the adjacent landowners should be involved in those decisions, that would be the reason why we would suggest flipping it to a conditional use permit on the vertical integrations.
All right. Is that something specific that you found used in other jurisdictions?
Many jurisdictions require everything to be a conditional use permit. This draft's based on discussions that we've had in committee with city of Sioux Falls and with Minnehaha County.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the temporary ordinance?
I'll move to approve the temporary ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on to item five now.
This is the second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Track 2C Kroger's Edition, Northwest Quarter, Section 28, T-98 North, R-51W, from the A1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Developmental District, Good Earth Farm, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to one.
Thank you. This is an application from Jeff and Nancy Kirstein. This property is approximately three miles to the south of the city of Lenox. The identified parcel is approximately 24.10 acres in size. The purpose for this application is, staff has been working with the applicants over a couple of years now. The property is zoned A1 agricultural, primarily utilized for a single-family dwelling and agricultural uses. And so the applicants are desirous of additional uses on the property. Those uses are only allowed within the C commercial district. But through this process of a plan development district, it can incorporate some of the additional uses that they desire on the property, as well as the county and the citizens and the adjacent properties are protected because of the conditions that can be placed through a plan development district. And so I won't go too much in the details of what the applicants are proposing. They can talk about some of those. But what I will show you is the draft ordinance that is before you this morning for your consideration. So again, what this ordinance would do would primarily allow a mixed use on the property. The applicants would continue to utilize their single-family dwelling and agricultural-type uses around the property, but would incorporate some of the things that they are desirous of incorporating on the property, such as a campground, some sale of produce, direct sale types, fireworks sales, private outdoor rec facility, bed and breakfast establishment, nursery greenhouse, retail sales and trade, on-sale alcohol establishment, hotel motel, event center. Those would all be the permitted uses that would be allowed within that district. And then through discussions with the applicants, we've established some regulations as far as hours of operation and some other types of specific development considerations. At this time, the applicants aren't proposing any additional structures or development on the property, so they were not required to submit a preliminary development plan. If in the future they desire additional structures or development on the property, they would have to go through a final development of plan approval with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did consider this application and has recommended approval of this application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Are there any questions for staff? If not, is the applicant here? Good morning. Just state your name and address, please.
Nancy Kirstein, 28318, 466th Avenue in Lenox. I reside on the property. As Toby stated, we've been working with the county for several years to try to define... Um, as Toby stated, we've been working with the county, um, for several years to try to define what it is that we're doing, um, on our farm. I would describe our farm as an experiential farm for people to come and visit. Um, we've been trying to kind of work within the confines of, um, what is, is written with our vegetable stand and where we can have people and where they can go into buildings or not. Um, and after talking with Toby and the county, this is what we've come up with to kind of satisfy what it is that, that we're doing. Ultimately, our goal is to take, um, this piece of land that we have, this 25 acres, and to make it sustainable financially for us. Growing vegetables is a tough business, um, and so we kind of need to rely on other revenue streams to help support that. And by allowing people onto that space to experience what, uh, South Dakota agriculture, um, kind of nostalgically is like, uh, we can do that. I have been recently working with the State Department of Tourism. Um, I'm a s- part of a small cohort of farms across the state, um, to promote this type of, of tourism and activity, um, to bring in additional revenue to the state. Um, it's kind of an exciting time, so we're hoping that, um, with today's approval, we are able to move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of the ordinance?
Ned Horstedt, 27058 South Southeastern Avenue. I just want to speak in support of what they're trying to do. My wife runs a small farming operation, um, similar to theirs, and I think having an actual, way to do this outside of the existing framework is ideal, so I'm in full support and encourage you to support them.
Thank you. Is anyone else here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? If not, do we have a motion?
I also move, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gibbon, a second by Commissioner Schmidt. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
This is a motion to approve.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on to item six on our agenda.
The second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Southwest Quarter, except H1, Section 17, T-98 North, R-50 West, from the A-1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Developmental District, I-29 Ag and Industrial Park, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommendation for approval failed zero to five.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is an application from Progressive Ag Holdings, LLC. Uh, this property, as you can see, is just to the east across the township road from the Sioux Falls Regional Livestock Auction. Of course, it's at the intersection of US 18 and Interstate 29. Parcel size is approximately 157 acres in size. Uh, the purpose for this application is the applicants are desirous of doing a mixed-use development on the property. Primarily, uh, two different tracks, which I'll show you a picture of that a little bit, but essentially two tracks, uh, for development of the property. Uh, track one would be primarily a commercial use, which they've identified, uh, a process of tenant for that. So it would track, uh, track two would be the, uh, the remainder of the parcel. Uh, that would be a mixture or allow of commercial, uh, I-1 and I-2 uses within that. Uh, the, uh, in working with the applicants on the, on the draft ordinance, they're not bypassing any of the regulations of the county. So anything that's permitted, permissive, conditional use is the same within this district, which they have to go through the same process. But this particular ordinance says it allows, um, some development of a business park type, uh, uses within there. It's a flexibility, uh, for the, for the property. Again, this, this would just be the, the layout of the subareas. So again, subarea A would be allowable use, would be commercial uses, uh, primarily warehousing. And again, they have a, a tenant, a proposed tenant for that subarea. Subarea B would be the remainder of it. Again, you know, within that district would be, uh, permitted, permissive, permissive, permitted, and conditional uses of the, uh, commercial I-1 and I-2. So a true, what I would call a true business park with, with mixed commercial uses of that. So this was the ordinance that staff worked with the applicant to develop. And again, uh, bypassing no regulations that are within the conventional zoning ordinance. All things that would require permits are going to continue to require permits. Um, the standards that we develop, other regulations, so for subarea A would be the smaller track. Again, landscaping plans, no outside materials, uh, must screen, typical type stuff that we would require, uh, on a typical application. Uh, subarea B would be the larger track. There's some ongoing discussion with the applicant. Uh, the cons- the only concern would be is, uh, item number F-2. So as you can see in the first subarea, uh, the requirement would just be that they submit a, a landscape plan that would be approved with the final development plans by the planning commission. Uh, this particular subarea, uh, identified that there would have to be a, a landscape buffer around the entire perimeter of that subarea B, uh, with trees of height of six feet. Again, that wouldn't be a full screen buffer, that would be a partial buffer on it. Um, and so there's, uh, the, the applicants are desirous of changing item number two to match what it is in subarea A. From a staff, staff perspective, uh, the planning commission did not recommend that, but we're open to that prospect. The reason why that was incorporated in there is because, uh, we're incorporating a mixed use of C, I-1 and I-2. Within the I-2 district, that allows our largest-type structures in the county. One, one of the concerns is to hear from a lot of property owners in the county that are adjacent to commercial industrial properties is the lack of screening, and so this was kind of an attempt to address some of those concerns in the future. Wouldn't be addressed. Also, uh, the applicant, um, has talked, has outreach to some of the surrounding property owners. I've talked to officials in the city of Worthing. It doesn't seem to be, as of now, that I haven't heard really any objections uh, from the city of Worthing, which has endorsed this property. We have, uh, staff has heard no, uh, questions or concerns from any adjacent property owners to this application. Staff did recommend approval of this application. As stated though, it was, uh, the recommendation to approval, uh, was zero to five. With that, we'd have to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Questions for staff? If not, uh, will the applicant please come up? Hi. Could you just state your name and address, please?
Uh, Don Nelson, 6513 South Jeffrey Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I am the CFO for Progressive Ag Holdings LLC, as well as E-Parts Incorporated. As Toby mentioned, we currently hold an option on the quarter section, uh, adjacent to the, uh, planned development to the west, uh, which, uh, EB, uh, EB Trailers is located there, Puck Enterprises is located there, Sioux Falls Regional Livestock, as well as LC, LSE Manufacturing, and across the, the, uh, 18, uh, Countryside Convenience. Again, it's, uh, located, uh, east, a half mile east of the interchange of I-29 and, uh, US Highway 18. How do I turn the slide? Okay, thank you. Uh, our request is to rezone this parcel from agricultural to a planned development, uh, so that we can develop a mixed-use industrial park that would offer the, offer the ability to, uh, bring in commercial, light industrial, and general industrial type, uh, businesses. Uh, we currently have, uh, one interested party in E-Parts Incorporated, who has outgrown its current footprint in Hudson, South Dakota. Uh, and so there's a need to expand in an area where we have, uh, interstate access and access to, uh, excellent US Highway 18. Uh, we canvassed this area, uh, for months, and, uh, we found that this, uh, tract or this area hits all of the, the, the hot topics, points that we need in order to grow uh, and keep up with demand with, with E-Parts. Stemming from interstate access to three-phase electric, to rural water, and northern, our, our natural gas pipeline is not too far away. Uh, so Brandon Van Beek is, uh, the CEO and President of E-Parts, and he's good here today to talk a little bit more about how we got here and, and about his business. So with that, we were excited to know that, uh, the map over here to the right, um, shows that the area to be in a rural, commercial, and industrial target, which is part of the adapt, adopted 2020, or 2005 to 2025 Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan. And we were encouraged to get staff, uh, the planning and zoning staff approval, uh, or recommendation for approval a few weeks ago. A few weeks ago, we didn't fare so well in front of planning and zoning, and I think, uh, part of that, um, was that we were, we maybe were just, uh, misunderstood as to what we're about and what we're trying to do there. So with that, if you might flip to the next slide there. We've went out to, uh, the local business owners in the area, talked to them all about, uh, our E-Parts Incorporated and the intent of the industrial park that we're proposing. And, uh, we were, uh, happy to see that, uh, local businesses have unanimously supported our project. They've, uh, said as business owners and operators in the direct vicinity of the projects, our opinion that this, uh, development will complement, complement our operations and add value to the interchange and the overall region. Uh, it's signed by, uh, Countryside Convenience, Puck Manufacturing, EBY Trailers, LSE, LSE Manufacturing, and, uh, also, uh, we had a late, uh, discussion with, uh, Sioux Falls Regional Livestock, and they're in support as well. So, uh, we also felt that it was real important, so that we weren't misunderstood, to go and have, uh, multiple meetings with the city of Worthing and the city of Canton. We had multiple meetings in Worthing. We presented at both city council, um, in both, in both towns. And, uh, we really did not have any negative feedback. Um, in fact, uh, Scott Dewitt from Worthing Planning and Zoning, um, was quoted as, after meeting with E-Parts and the I-AI team multiple times, "We are happy to voice our support for the project and location. We believe this development will be a great addition to our community and the region." Same went for, uh, similar, uh, in Canton. Uh, one of the city council members told us that, you know, it's a few miles out of Canton, but any growth in this area is good growth, um, and, uh, Canton will benefit from it. So with that, we also, uh, we also enjoyed the, uh, support from the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance and Jesse Fockert. He, uh, I want to commend him and his, his, uh, group for helping and assisting us find a place that, uh, we can grow. And, uh, on top of that, we've, uh, you know, if we can get this approved, we know that we have interested companies from out of state that have, uh, reached out to us to, uh, as, as they're interested in coming here. And, uh, they fit, they fit into the commercial and industrial type setting. Um, the one, the one thing I can't emphasize enough to the commission is that E-Parts is, is our anchor, and, uh, we want to attract good, good businesses that share, share the same ideals that we do. And, uh, um, so that we have something that, we put something together that's aesthetically pleasing to look at, something that's going to help the, the local economy here, the county, the region, and the state of South Dakota. We feel like, uh, um, we can, uh, you know, go ahead and fill this, uh, development park up in a short period of time, within one to five, you know, approximately five years, who knows? But, uh, we're willing to put in the work. We're willing, we're committed. We're willing to, our back, backers are willing to invest the money. Um, we hope that, uh, we get your support. I would ask that Brandon, uh, come up and talk about E-Parts. Now, I'll be here for questions later.
Brandon Van Beek, 520 Parkway, Hudson, South Dakota, uh, owner-operator of E-Parts, which we hope to be the first tenant into the industrial park. Uh, we are an e-commerce business founded in 2017, selling on Amazon, eBay, and multiple different websites that we operate ourselves. We sell new aftermarket spare parts, um, like hydraulic pumps, linkage parts, belts, electrical, electrical switches and things of that nature. Um, so we're bringing those products in from all over the world, warehousing them, and then shipping them out on a daily basis. Um, as you can see there, a couple photos of our current facility there in Hudson. Um, we started there in 2017 with 10,000 square feet, added on 20,000 square feet about a year and a half ago, and now at this point, we're currently leasing two other buildings in Hudson and just finalized a lease for some warehouse space in Northwest Iowa that we had to get in order to keep up with our inventory demand. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the map here just showing a little bit of where E-Parts would like to build. Um, in that yellow rectangle there in the southwest corner, that is the 25 acres that was already discussed where we'd like to put our building. We'd like to build a hundred thousand square foot facility to start with. Um, that would be warehouse and office space, um, that we can use to get all of our product back under one roof, make our operation a little bit more efficient. Um, then we'd like to retain that 25, the remaining part of that 25 acres in order to grow into over time as our business grows. Uh, we really like that site as there's a lot of, you know, industrial growth there at the eggs that are ready, and just being an extension of that, um, really excited for it. Next slide, please. Um, there as well as on the side here, a couple pictures of, uh, the building that we're hoping to build there at the, the site. Um, that would be the warehouse and then the office space off on the front. A couple reasons for this particular site. Um, the first one about growing our facility and property, as we talked about, we, um, one point there is we don't have any more room to grow in Hudson. We can't add on to our building there anymore, so we're looking for a long-term home for our business. Um, we'd like to site that we can grow into over time, and that can also supplement us as we become a large-scale business, hopefully in time. And we have identified this site as being that. Second, uh, point there is a proximity to distribution centers, and that would be UPS Post Office, and we're starting to work with FedEx now. Um, this site would allow us to get closer to Sioux Falls, which would allow us for a later pickup time with those shipping carriers, which would allow us to be able to get more packages out the same day. And in the e-commerce world where everyone likes fast shipping, that's very important. Um, in addition to that, they have an early and a late pickup time this close to Sioux Falls, so we're able to offer more expedited shipping services that we can't currently in Hudson. Um, we deal a lot with retail customers, so we get a surge of orders once 5:00 PM hits on the East Coast. And then as it gets later across the country, people are at home shopping, and we get more orders. So being able to get more of those out the same day would be huge for us. Another point of the incoming and outgoing freight. Um, as we've had more sales and our business has grown, we've had a tremendous amount more of truck freight coming in and out of our facility. What we did two years ago in a year, we can do that in a matter of two weeks now, in the amount of truck traffic coming in and out. So having a site like this that's direct, directly located on the interstate as well, uh, as well as on a US highway would be a huge advantage for our freight operations, not only from a safety, cost, and time management, but also it's going to make sure to keep all that heavy truck traffic off the roads that local tax, tax- that heavy truck traffic off the roads that local taxpayers are paying for. We're excited about this site because we can keep that heavy traffic on the interstate, on a US highway, and then directly into our facility. Another big point for us is the human resources. We've struggled being able to find help down in the Hudson area. And this site, we're really excited that we'd be able to draw from the labor forces of Hudson, Canton, Worthing, Beersford, Centerville, T-Harrisburg, all those rural communities. We're going to have access to more employees, but still stay in the rural communities. It was a big point for us to stay rural. We started as a rural company, so we're excited to do that as a company. So yeah, we're excited to be growing in Lincoln County, staying in Lincoln County, and investing into Lincoln County, and look forward to being a part of all those local communities.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to the site engineer.
And I'm, we've got a big agenda, so I'm going to start limiting people on time. So if you can hit some bullet points, that'd be great.
I promise you, I will be very quick. Good morning. Todd Van Monen, 30994 434th Avenue, Yankton, South Dakota. I am the project engineer. I helped assemble the application, so if there's any questions with that, I could help. My role to this point has been site analysis. We've, our initial investigation shows that we have good site for construction of slab-on-grade facilities. We have the adequate power at this site. We've talked with the rural water. We've got more than adequate water for our initial E-Parts construction and any potential other tenants at the site. There's also, one of the strong here is we have a commercial-grade internet connection adjacent to the site, so everything's going well. And again, one of the big points, we have, they receive all of their freight via semi-truck. This way, we can come right off the interstate, right onto the new Highway 18, and avoid, you know, any potential damage to the road. We always hear concerns about roads with new expansions, and this site really works well. We have been in discussions with the DOT about getting a access directly off Highway 18, and we will continue those discussions. We have also talked with the township to say that we would minimize any use of 471. One of the main challenges we have on the site is drainage and just getting the water off of the site. If you can see on this map, the, it's kind of hard to tell, but this is a site, the site is self-contained. We really have no water entering the site from anyone else. Maybe just a little bit leaks in from the north, and so we're controlling and destiny of our own water on the site. The ordinance requires that we do stormwater management, similar to what anything else would be happening in the municipality city of Sioux Falls. We would retain our water, you know, as we develop more hard surface, you get more runoff. Therefore, we will contain that runoff as directed in the ordinance and using standard engineering procedures. The site does have some natural detention areas now that we would utilize for that and expand those as required by the development. And again, this particular site, if you look at it or in your sheets, it's split. Some of it goes over to Snake Creek and the rest goes to the west. About a third of our property would migrate to the west. All of this area is very flat, and so there's no rapid runoff of water, which is a benefit. Next slide, please. No, this one here. And again, I guess what I have here, keep moving, is the topography map of our actual site. Again, you can see up to the northwest, we have a wetland right now. As that fills up, that water would make its way to the west, and that encompasses about a third of the landform there, goes to the west. The rest migrates to the south. Right now, the ditch, the highway, right-of-way ditch, it is about two foot higher on the east end than it is the west. With the state redesigning Highway 18, we will work with them as they come up with their drainage plans, but they will be challenged to move that water also because that is a very flat stretch of road, which again, means that we are keeping the water runoff slowed and detained. And I guess lastly, Toby had touched on our concerns about the language that was in the ordinance regarding landscaping. Again, it's our intent to have a nice-looking campus. We have no issues with having landscaping. The language that's in for Sub Area A, we like how that reads, that we're going to provide a plan at the development stage, and we would also like to have that same language incorporated for Area B. If you read Area B, our legal counsel said that, you know, it does say that we need to have a buffer around the entire perimeter. That would include the front and all sides. We hope to have industries that have very attractive buildings that we don't want to hide, and we would deal with that at the county level during the development stage if we could have the same language in there. So with that, I will conclude and be available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of the rezone?
Jesse Fockert, 610 Part T, Drive Harpert, South Dakota. President and CEO of the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Toby, can you get my 20 slide deck up? I'm just kidding. Here to speak just briefly in support of this, we see a lot of future development, looking at the, being interested in the Highway 18 corridor as that is expanded to a four-lane highway. It could be, will be a thorough, major economic development catalyst for this region. I think this is a really good first step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Come on up.
Sandy Lundstrom. I live at 215 West Fourth Street here in Canton, and I am the mayor of the City of Canton. Two weeks ago, the gentleman came and presented their proposal to us so we would know what was going on in the corridor, the Highway 18 corridor. And last night at our city commission meeting, they voted unanimously to support in favor of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor?
Scott Dewitt, 301 South Cherry Street, Worthing, South Dakota. Chairperson of Planning and Zoning of Worthing. And as I've already been quoted on one of the slides, we have met with their group several times and have been nothing but, we have nothing but good to say about them. They've kept us in the loop since day one on what their entire project is going to encompass. So we're all in favor and, you know, approve of what they're doing.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor?
Betty Otten, 46787 273rd Street, T. I'm here just as a taxpayer, and I'm not involved or financially or otherwise in this project. I did give, I am a proponent because this type of economic business climate fits perfectly into our zoning regulations per Toby and his team at the planning and zoning meeting. I brought and distributed a copy of the Sioux Falls Business Jody Swan article from June 15th about this development, in case you haven't read it. So thank you for your favorable consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor?
Paul Garbers, 1016 Angelene. As a business owner of Countryside Convenience, been there since 1999. I have talked to the other businesses myself that were listed up there, and just want you to know there's a unified feeling to get this thing developed, and what better place to put it? Also been involved with conversations of some of the commissioners and listened to today of trying to find money to do other projects. I think this is a great start, and also that I would like for you to think about is Brandon being the younger generation. We need a lot more younger generation to step up and decide that they're going to make this world a better world when a lot of things ain't very good right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Okay, is there anyone?
Man, I'm sure. I do have a letter that we agreed to read.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So this is from David Gillespie, 1125 East Elder Street. Dear County Commissioners, I'm writing this letter in support of E-Parts, e-commerce, and support of the rezone from A-1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District I-29 Ag Industrial Park. I also support approving the preliminary plan of the I-29 Ag and Industrial Park. After serving 12 years on the Lincoln County Commission from 2009 to 2021, I thought and supported business expansion along the I-29 corridor or near the area. I feel the company is in good standing with its neighbors, past and present. I hope if approved by the Department of Transportation, entrance can be gained to the industrial park off US 18, and for other ag-related businesses that could follow with this business in the park and closing. I feel this business will be thoughtful and considerate for the future to the current infrastructure in the area in Lincoln County.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak against or in opposition to the rezone?
My name is John Sweater, 805 East 63rd Street in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Our family farms and, Toby, if I can have you go back two slides, please? Maybe one, yeah, if you can, I don't know if you can blow that map. Nope, whoop. Yeah, go back to that earth, I think it was the earth slide, right there. Again, you can't really see it very well, but I do appreciate their engineer for pointing out that this land is nearly flat and that your goal is to have as much water get off of your parking lots as quick as possible. You're exactly correct because all that land's going to, all that water's going to migrate south, and since this land is flat, it has no place to drain, so it backs up on our land. So we do agree, it's a beautiful site. You've got a beautiful building. I have no problem with your building, with your plan. We did have a meet, a couple of us had an opportunity to meet with Brandon and Don about a week ago. We had an open conversation about water drainage, and I know you've got your engineered storm-retention ponds and your drainage retention and storm-water management. And what that simply means is that it's going to be stored on your property until it continually runs south onto our property and backs up, and we just have no place to go with it. So in our meeting with them, we talked about trying to develop some form of communication, cooperation for getting rid of the water that's going to come south, because once it comes south, it has no place to go. As you mentioned in your topography map that you had up there, I'm glad you brought yours because it's about a one or two-foot elevation drop. So when that water leaves that 160-acre parcel, and it will leave that parcel because it's now in parking lots and roadways and ditches, it's going to go no place and it's going to stall immediately south. We have lost probably safely 50 acres on one farm, Ken, 30, 40?
Yeah.
On another farm of his. So again, we're not asking to put in the storm drainage system. We're asking you to participate with us, work with us to figure out how we can take a one-foot elevation and make water come from your 160 acres that you want to develop. You want to put parking lots, you want to have areas that, again, are usable. And I can respect that. It's a beautiful site. You've got a Taj Mahal building. And I just pray that everything else looks like that building and not the Lenox exit where we have the camper graveyard, that eyesore. Again, keep away from that. But again, you've got a great plan, you've done your due diligence, you've done your homework. It's just a drainage issue that we're going to be dealing with folks. And that's why, if we can work together, if you can put some type of requirement that there's some future drainage, because everything's coming south and it's got no place to go, in plain and simple. If I can convert our cattail growth into cannabis growth, I'll be a rich man. But until I can figure out how to raise cannabis in a cattail environment, sorry guys, I have to, I have to be able to work with you instead of against you. But I'll support your project if we can figure out some way that we can work some drainage out.
John, are you asking for some financial support?
Well, in our, in our meeting that we had, and again, our meeting was very casual. We met, was it a week ago, today, I think? And it was really three of us. On this side, we had Paul Garbers, Ken Sweater, myself, Brandon and Don. And we just had a very casual meeting. We just explained our concerns and nobody left with a black eye, nobody had a flat tire when they left, but we shook hands and agreed that we were going to disagree. That we felt the need to have some communication and some cooperation for some type of drainage compensation. And I think it was probably put that, I guess as a farmer, you have to clean your ditches out. And that's kind of how I took it. Is that correct or incorrect? That's, I think, the final statement. So, but, and I can respect that, but again, there's only so much money to go through the ditches, and when you start looking at this from their property where it has to go back over to the interstate, you're going to end up with about two and a half miles of ditching, and unfortunately, about a mile and a half, mile and three-fourths of that, maybe almost two miles goes through a combination of our family land and Ken Sweater's land as well. So it's just a big area, and again, you can dig a six-foot deep ditch with a one-foot elevation drop. It's going to flow at the speed of lightning, you know? It's just going to be just crawling along there, folks. So that's our situation. We have to figure out some way to get the water from that project through and out, and if we can work together on some type of a system. Again, it's a beautiful site you have, and I think it'd be a good thing for the community. Aesthetically, as long as you don't bring a camper graveyard in like the Lenox exit in your facility that you have planned, gorgeous. Not a problem with that. It's just if we can have some communication and figure out how to do some drainage, moving the water from that project.
John, where do you understand that their stormwater detention pond would drain to?
Well, the stormwater, like their engineer said, a third of it is going to run potentially to the west, and two-thirds of it's going to run to the south. Well, as it runs south, it all migrates south through part of Galen Shuffelman's property, goes on to a farm that's recently sold to a Bratton family, then it runs through Ken Sweater's property, through our family farms. It comes down Old 77, which I guess is now, I don't even know what it's called, 117, I guess, I still call it Old 77. Comes down Old 77, and then it has to go all the way through and run back to the west to the interstate system and to what we locally call Severt's Slough. And so, yeah, so, and I mean, if you want me to leave the podium, I can draw, I can show you on that, but it basically snakes along that whole area, and it just doesn't move. So, so again, we have no problem with the water retention ponds, but I know what water retention ponds are. They retain the water till it drains off. And I've been involved with meetings here with the City of T. I was praying that Don Hoffman wasn't going to walk out before we got our chance to talk because you know what his opinion would be on this and his conversation would be this, just with the experiences that he's had on Nine Mile Creek and the drainage coming off the T location. But again, they'll promise that the culvert size hasn't changed, and you're exactly right. The culvert size is still a three-foot or a four-foot culvert. It's just running at full capacity nonstop. So it's, they promised it's not more drainage, but it's not more drainage because it's, they didn't change the culvert size, it's just more drainage because the retention pond is full and it's just going to continually drain. retention pond is full and it's just gonna continually drain from that, so. So that's what we're looking at is that aspect of it, you know, it's, it's a beautiful site, it's a good plan, they've, they've done their homework, their due diligence, research. I know Galen's here, his land is right across from it, aesthetically, it's gonna affect Galen's property more than, than our property, we're not looking at our property for future development, we're looking at our property of trying to farm it, to be able to run cattle on it, not being eight foot high cattails.
Thank you. Toby, did you look at drainage when you made the, when staff made the recommendation for approval?
So, the next item you have would be the preliminary plan, subdivision plan, and that addresses preliminarily the drainage portions of it. The next phase would be the final development engineering plans, which we haven't received yet, but that's part of the process.
Okay.
What I would, what I would remind you is you've adopted a new drainage or, or master plan, we've also been utilizing, you know, Wink Engineering for analysis, that will continue to be as part of this process moves forward.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak?
Yes, but I, you got.
Oh.
Gentlemen, may I make a qualification?
You may, but I'm, we need to get moving on, on things.
I appreciate the gentleman's concern about drainage, that's what I do every day, is talk about drainage. What, again, you look at what's happening regionally, ag ground is being tiled, everything's being maximized for crop production. It's the total opposite of what we do in a municipality where we slow, control and retain water. And so a lot of, you know, the majority of the problem is that when you optimize ag ground, you're trying to get that water off the site as soon as possible to keep things dry and productive. What we're doing, we're part of the solution already by stepping up out in the country to slow it down, to maximize our area. We're gonna lose a lot of ground to store water that we could otherwise develop. So we are making a considerable effort both monetarily and through the project to not be part of the problem, but be part of the solution. I mean, this is a whole regional issue and it's not with this type of project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak against the project? And I'm not gonna, I don't want any redundancy, we're gonna get this thing moving.
Galen Schoffelman, 5505 South Andrea Avenue. In 1963, my father bought that land, he grazed the pasture, he mowed the road ditch. Today, in about 1990, we sold the acreage off, today the, the pasture is cattails, the road ditch is cattails. I've been talking to the state about the highway expansion. One of the highway, one of the state employees told me the only way to get rid of the water in the road ditch is through my land. He has told me that there's really not much that they can do with the highway expansion to get the road, to get the water to flow in, in the road ditches. I've talked to Ken Sweater about the township ditch which stands full of water. Obviously, when you have standing water, it seeps underground and low spots on a farm, not, not natural wetlands, low spots, do end up getting wet. And I see this as, as further problem with low spots on my farm getting wet, with the road ditch continuing to stand full of water and it was limiting my ability to sell three acreages, which I'm entitled to do on the, along Highway 18, because no one's going to buy a building eligibility with a road ditch full of water. So I, and, and Mr. Jandle, who owns the acreage, I doubt, my, my ditch in my farm does not run all the way up to the highway. I doubt very much that Mr. Jandle has the wherewithal to, to dig a ditch, to join up to my ditch, to drain the highway's water. And so that's gonna be my expense and all that's gonna do is create further problems for John Sweater and Ken Sweater. It'll just end up more water coming their direction.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition? I, I'm, I'm, no, I'm taking comments after, if we have time, we'll hear back from you.
All right, I'm Ken Sweater, I'm representing Lynn Township. And madam, I just mentioned that we had an agreement with the township, the township does not have an agreement with you. And far as their access to using this gravel road, we've just been down that with the packing plant, about uses of it, and we had a lot of neighbors who are opposition, about them using trucks and stuff, so that road's gonna have to be closed off for their use, they're gonna have to come off 18. And far as anything else with the township, like Schoffelman said, roads down the, down south have been flooded and we've had to repair them, repair them.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition? All right, sir, I will let you come up, you've got five minutes max.
Don Nelson, just one short comment. One of the, one of the issues, ideas that we spoke with John Sweater about the other day was he, what, he asked about putting together a plan and that they'd been working on it, but they don't have a plan put together. The comment that I wanna make is that they have not cleaned out their ditches for years and so I, I'm sure they are experiencing more and more water. But I don't believe that we should be held responsible for someone's lack of maintenance over the years, simply put.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and consider a motion.
To move this thing off the dime, I'll make a motion for discussion.
And is that a motion to approve?
For approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
To get my comments out of the way, Madam Chair, I'll get started.
Go ahead, Commissioner Poppins.
I think there's not a single person that's in opposition of what would go on it if it gets rezoned. What we're looking at today is, at the moment, is, is this the right time and, and right piece of property to change use from ag to a different type of use? We've heard about drainage for many years, Commissioner Schmidt, you've been on the board a couple of years. Time and time again, we have engineers that tell us that they're not going to affect adjacent land and it does, we've seen it, we have new plans, we're, we're making inroads. Unfortunately, this area is extremely flat and burdensome to water runoff, just in nature. So any change of it's going to be a negative impact to anything downstream. And unless it is addressed as to how it gets through all adjacent properties that would be affected, it's pretty difficult to do that. In the own admission, we, we, there talks about change of use and, and they're changing how ag land tries to drain water and they try to retain water. They're in conflict when you put one into the other area, which is, goes back to why I support and I hope that we continue to support any, any business that can be located in or adjacent to a municipality because that's their philosophy, it's not the ag philosophy. So, again, no one's in opposition, I don't think, of what would go on there, it's just, is it the right time and place to change an ag to, which is not adjacent to a municipality, to something else?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, we got ourselves I-29, we're a county that is fortunate to have an interstate highway system running through it. And this piece of property sits pretty much at the corner, offset just a little bit at the intersection of an interstate highway and a US highway that will soon be a four-way, four-lane highway. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that the agricultural nature of the land at a intersection like that has, its time has come and gone. And I appreciate Commissioner Poppins' comments about the nature of agriculture. We need to protect ag, we need to protect that land, but for some reason, previous commissions have already decided that this intersection is pretty important to do development at. And what these folks wanna do here is they just wanna further develop that property in a pretty similar way as the rest of the neighbors there. And I appreciate the comments from the folks who are worried about the drainage. And I'll tell you this, I mean, I'm supportive of the rezone, but you all, you have not addressed the drainage issue. You didn't talk about it, you didn't address it, you didn't say where the discharge point is gonna be. And out of that nice presentation you did, you, you didn't talk about where the water's gonna go. And you didn't bring up the fact that you had a meeting with these folks and you didn't come up to any kind of resolution. And I don't know why you didn't just bring that up and talk about the elephant in the room. Anybody who wants to do business here in Lincoln County knows that drainage is a problem. And so if you don't come to these meetings talking about how you're gonna drain that property, see, what you said is you're just gonna build a retention pond, but you didn't say where it's gonna discharge to. You didn't say where the plan is for that water to go to, you just said, well, the water's gonna go in the retention pond and then it's gonna meter out somewhere. Where, where is the somewhere? Where is that water going to? That's why I asked John where the water's going to. No offense, John, I didn't get a good answer from you either, you just said it's gonna go all over.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I said, sir, it's gonna go left, and two thirds, it's gonna stop.
Is it gonna go under the highway? Where is their retention pond gonna be on the map? Well, that's what I wanna know.
How do I know? I'm not an engineer.
I know. Well, you're the one who jumped up and wanted to talk, so.
You're right, he was asking a question. So, the land is gonna, the pond is gonna come in, because this is their parcel here. It's gonna come down and feed into this, all the way through here, and it has to end up over here before it goes back down. So, from this tract of land, this is the property, in this area, it has to migrate south through here, or come in this direction and wait through here.
Is there a culvert right there where you're saying, under the highway? I mean, how does it get over, under the highway?
Here's, I'm, I'm gonna take the floor here for a second. Sir, do you wanna, sir, do you wanna sit down, please? I'm taking the floor. This is a rezone. After the rezone, all of this is gonna go in front of Wink, they're gonna figure it out, they're gonna come up with a drainage plan. If, it'll either work or it won't, I think that we're getting into this, we're getting too far into the weeds on the rezone. So I'm gonna close the floor on the rezone request. We've got motions, so I'd like to call the question.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item seven.
So this, I'll be brief, this next item is a corresponding item to the application for the rezone. This is the preliminary subdivision plan, so this will show, and I'll let the applicant's representative go in more detail, this shows the preliminary subdivision requirements, the drainage, grading, all of those items. What I will remind you is that, so this, you will approve or not approve this preliminary subdivision plan today as conditioned. If there's things that you would want staff to work with adjoining property owners to facilitate approval of this, we can certainly work on that. So this is just gonna show primarily though, a preliminary drainage plan. The next phase, per the ordinance is, is that they have to come up with a drainage plan. The drainage plan will be reviewed by staff and our consultants to make sure that it meets the standards that have been adopted by the county. In addition, you've adopted a master drainage plan which incorporates additional standards and requirements for the approval of this. But I would recommend based on some of the conversation that we've had today, that you just would, you know, require staff to work with adjacent property owners and the applicant to ensure that there is no unreasonable negative impacts on surrounding property owners. With that, I'll let the applicant talk more about the proposal.
Thank you, will the applicant come up, please? And Toby, just to make sure, there has been no drainage proposals submitted as of right now.
They've submitted what's required as a preliminary plan, a full drainage plan is not required until this plan has been approved.
Thank you.
Correct.
Go ahead, sir.
Don Nelson, 6513 South Jeffrey Avenue. Yep, we're, the diagram here shows, reflects the subdivision of A and B. Where e-parts is, our anchor entity is wanting to relocate to and subdivision B is the future development for commercial, light industrial, and general industrial entities which we hope to attract. Pretty much gave a summary as to, you know, who we are, what we're about. We don't have any problem with being good neighbors and not providing any, you know, dumping water on neighbors. We will, we'll follow the rules, we'll put together a plan of discharge and we would just recommend that that would be part of the building permit process that, you know, in order for us to go forward, we would have to take and show that we're not gonna take and dump on our neighbors. We also think it's a, the door swings, swings both ways. If your neighbors are not taking and maintaining their property and they're not cleaning out their ditches, that should not be the, our burden. So we, I, I want that recognized as well. The other thing, as far as the subdivision, I don't know if the, this is where the ordinance comes up as far as the landscaping and whatnot, we would ju, we would love to just have it mimic the subdivision where we will put together an appropriate landscape plan, which is case specific for the entity that comes in, into the park. And I guess with that, I will open it up for questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Where's your discharge point for your detention pond?
To, to address that, the water is going to go where the water goes now.
I'm just asking you, where is the discharge point on the map? Can you point it out to me on the map or not?
Sure, right here.
You're gonna have to talk very loudly.
Not a problem, I'm just talking loud. Right now, this water here migrates over to the wetland and it, there's culvert in here somewhere and as it pops out, that moves west, that's the discharge off of this property. Right now, there is a culvert, right down here somewhere, I'm not seeing it on the map, but this property migrates down here, there's an area down here where the catchment is, and there's some more catchment down here. This water enters the highway ditch, some of it moves this way and some of it will move to the east. Those are the, that is where the discharge is now and that's where we'll continue to discharge. Drainage design, drainage management is, you look at the historic drainage, what's happening right now. You just make up a number, when you do the design work, it's gonna say 100 CFS is the maximum runoff for a 25-year storm. You retain that water, you don't keep it on, but you do not release it at higher than historic runoff rates. That is the whole, kind of the just drainage design. That is what's happening with the Amazon facility in Sioux Falls. We're gonna look at what's running off now and we're gonna have to retain it so it doesn't come off any faster. so it doesn't come off any faster than that. That is what we would do in conjunction with your design requirements.
Thank you, sir.
So, the discharge points are the same as they are right now.
Toby, on the point with the amendment about the buffering, I guess we kind of glossed over that. What?
That's, you acted on that in the previous.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything with that with this? All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion on the resolution.
Is this a public hearing or not?
It's a resolution.
You need a motion on that, Commissioner?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Chair.
Is there a second?
Is this a motion to approve?
It is.
Second for discussion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Well, I think I got my answer just now. You said you're going to let drainage continue as is, which is not helpful, I don't think. Not to these folks. These folks came here and just said they'll be okay with it if you fix the drainage issue. And you didn't say you're going to fix the drainage issue. You just said you're going to let it meter out. I don't know if that's helpful to you all. It's difficult. The problem is, in this process, this process is partially backwards. We'd like to have some of those, we'd like to know answers to some of those questions before making these decisions. That's what I'll have to say about it.
Sir, the floor's been closed, I'm sorry. What is your question, sir? You'll have to come up to the mic.
Alan Schoffelman, 5505 South Andrea Avenue. Right now, we're talking about how they're going to drain their diversion pond. My question is, how are they going to deal with the, my, my understanding is they're buying the whole 160 acres. How are they going to deal with the currently capped artesian well on the property that the state highway department assumes is flowing underneath the highway?
Thank you, sir. Toby, again, this is something that Wink would be looking at.
So, if you allow me an opportunity maybe to throw an idea out.
I would love that.
So, what, so I agree with what Commissioner Aaron says. This process is backwards, the final plans get approved at the later stage. There's a reason for that, is we don't want to, at the time that they're rezoning it, to spend a bunch of money on engineering, but on the flip side of it, we know we have issues. So I think what I would recommend is, is that, that, that we bring the final development plans back for review and approval by you, with my recommendation and, and Wink's recommendation.
That sounds fantastic.
And then we'll, we'll have a public media, hearing on that, we'll allow the neighbors to view it and to be a part of the approval process of it.
Yeah, there's no reason people can't be good neighbors, and there's no reason this has to be confrontational, and there's also no good reason that we shouldn't have good answers to these questions during these public hearings. I make a motion that we do what Toby said.
I'll second that motion if you take it in a second. Madam Chair.
I am.
I wonder where you have two motions.
What?
You have two motions on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor we have to withdraw.
All right.
I'll withdraw my motion.
The first motion.
Yes.
Do you withdraw your second then, Aaron's?
And then Commissioner Aaron's, do you withdraw your second?
I withdraw it.
Thank you.
And so the motion on the table currently is that we will approve the final plan as a public hearing at a later date?
We'll approve the preliminary plan conditioned on final development plans reviewed and presented for approval to the Board of Commissioners with staff recommendation.
Question for staff.
Go ahead.
Mr. Golden, since this isn't our protocol, I don't know that we can do this. Tell me we can.
Did you want my answer, or did you want the one you just gave?
I'm afraid, correctly in my honor, we can't do it that way.
Do we need to take a five-minute recess to make sure we're following procedure correctly?
It'd be an excellent idea.
All right, we're going to.
If you feel a motion and they come back with the final plan, you could.
What is this new motion?
There is not a new motion yet.
Oh, I thought Aaron's made a motion, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We're going to go for three on this one.
I'm going to start using my gavel in a second. I would entertain a motion to table the resolution.
So moved.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commission, Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries, item is tabled. Moving on to the second reading on item eight.
This is the second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County titled, Enacting the 2021 Flood Damage Protection Ordinance for Lincoln County and Repealing the 2011 Flood Plane Management Ordinance as amended.
Five minutes, John.
Five minutes?
Hey, that's more than I would have.
This is not a, this is not a drainage ordinance, this is a flood damage protection ordinance. Does not regulate maintenance of agricultural streams. Thank you for the screen. I'll just go through the whereas. There is damage in Lincoln County caused by flooding. Over the past 10 years, it's been excessive. Flood losses are caused by damage or by development. It is required that we enact a floodplain regulations that are appropriate to our risk and our mapping. Can we zoom a little? So, county must maintain an adequate ordinance, issue permits, and provide enforcement to ensure structures are built reasonably safe from flooding, and that new development causes no adverse impact. This is the basis of the whole ordinance. It's kind of simple, but it gets complex. It's federal regulations that we derive this ordinance from. New mapping was provided in 2016 showing improved changes to the areas of flood risk, including needed elevations for permitting. This has been exciting, very useful tool to provide adequate protection. However, the changes have affected that properties and projects currently shown by the new risk mapping are known to face known flood vulnerabilities. So we have new mapping, it extends out into areas that weren't mapped before. We know that it floods, but we aren't explicitly authorized to permit them. Also, projects not regulated by those new risk mappings may face mandated insurance costs when the new insurance maps become effective in 2023 is what we anticipate. So a person with a home that isn't in the floodplain could be in the floodplain in 2013 will require flood insurance. More importantly, we could permit a building that's below flooding that in 2013 will have flood insurance. We are not doing that because the flood administrator is authorized to use new data and to regulate to that. We want to make that explicit in this ordinance so that we are able to continue to protect homes, which we have many protected homes that were built according to the new elevations and the new mapping that would have flooded in years past, in the 10 years that we've had significant flooding. So, historically, ordinance changes are made whenever new mapping and related standards have been provided to ensure adequate, and that's important, adequate flood damage protection throughout the entire county. That's very important. Ordinance changes were made and proven with practical application over the past two and a half years. We received new mapping in 2016, 2018, a template ordinance. We use the 2011 template for ease of reading, made some changes to that, arrangements, some language clarity so that everyone could understand clearly where the sections of the ordinance are and what they pertain to. So ease of reading was a primary focus. Statutorily or mechanically, the changes are derived from Title 44 Code of Federal Regulations. They're consistent with the local municipalities. They've adopted new standards, higher standards, and the mapping that we're, is part of the new ordinance. The county master drainage plan, comprehensive and pre-disaster mitigation plans, these changes are consistent with that. And the zoning and subdivision ordinances of the county. It is important to note that the flood ordinance is part of a suite of ordinances that have portions of them that are relative to flooding and protection from that. The recent rezoning preliminary final plans, they'll be reviewed using the flood ordinance and detention requirements and runoff requirements to protect the downstream from any adverse impacts from that development. We've been doing that for as long as I've been here. I just wanted to show, Commissioner Schmidt, you asked for this last time. This is a map showing the crosshatched areas, the current floodplain. The blue area is the proposed or the actual risk mapping that we've been provided that will become effective in a couple of years. The hatched area was created in 1977. That's how old most of the mapping in southern and middle Lincoln County is. You can see that this person, when he came in 12 years ago to build that house, had to have a floodplain development permit. He was 12 feet above the creek. The new mapping shows follows the creek, that's a great thing, it follows the creek, and it follows the contours. This is consistent throughout the entire county. We validated with every application in the last four years with the applicants, does it flood like we're showing in the proposed areas? And they say yes. Very few disagree. And there hasn't been a lot of contention over the requirements for permitting a $500,000, $250,000 house that's going to cost $1,000 to prove it's higher than the flood.
John, John, go back to that once. Yeah, pardon me. Are you saying that the floodplain has shrunk or has it expanded?
It does both. In this case, it moves the entire north.
Politician.
Yeah.
It goes both ways. But I mean, I, okay, so is that, on that particular slide, there's a solid blue and there is the line with the horizontal line. So which is it today?
The hatched.
Which is what? Point to it.
With, with the lines.
On the thing, on the.
So.
On the video camera. Put your finger on what the new one they want to do.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, of course. This here.
This today?
This is today.
Now, what has made that, what has made that, you know, you said.
Made this.
Yeah, there it was before.
Yeah.
Which was content, it was, followed the lines. Now, all of a sudden, how did that, how did that get expanded to his front doorstep?
It didn't get expanded. As you see, it's still similar to this shape, but it's moved over, and it follows the stream. So we collected in 2008 elevation information for the entire county. Every square meter has an elevation to it. The FEMA contractor engineer ran modeling over that, and it's two-dimensional modeling, so now that follows the contours, the actual ground. So what we're facing here is that the change to new mapping is not worse, it's better. It follows the contours, it follows the elevations, it protects with actual, actual floodplain On this one, I would have to require flood elevate, flood development permit because I have to regulate to the existing flood insurance rate map. I would balk at it, and I've balked at it before with many other projects, have the same problem, that I know full well it doesn't need one. So one aspect of this ordinance change is, we're going to use accurate data. Of course, even with the ordinance change, since we won't have an effective insurance map change, I'll still be using it, but I can be authorized to use the risk data. It's very complex. This is the third iteration that we've had in four years of these floodplain insurance zones. The base data underneath it, that they're basing the insurance zones on, is, is good. It follows, the insurance zones start where one mile, square mile of watershed becomes one foot deep, and that's where the insurance zones start.
And this is the ordinance that's being recommended by FEMA, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for John by the commission?
Apologize, yes.
Go ahead.
John, just for the record, for the audience and for the board, who is it that requires us? What's the penalty if we don't? And then the third comment, you know, we've talked about things being backwards. What I find extremely backwards is a home can be placed into a floodplain or require mitigation, or not mitigation, but insurance when it's hot, clearly out of area, and it's, but it's their responsibility to prove that they're not in it versus the FEMA agency, you know, verifying that they are. You know, so I, I just want to go on the record, I thank you. Of all the things that we've discussed backwards, that burden is put onto that resident or taxpayer, and I find that to be unacceptable behavior.
I'd like to address that backwards also. On this one, the removal of a property from floodplain has gotten much more efficient over the last 20 years. It's now done online. This home itself would be able to, no charge, asked to be removed, out as shown, and submit that in, and there wouldn't have to be a surveyor involved. Other properties would have to have a, a surveyor, survey that to prove it. It, it works backwards and forwards, the insurance versus the risk is always a tangle, the insurance enforces it, the risk informs us. But I have a couple more and several that I'm going to breeze through if I could.
If you would just address who again for the record.
Yes.
And what the penalty is if we didn't adhere to it.
To the, oh, so if we do not participate in the program, then there will not be flood insurance available in Lincoln County.
And you're saying, John, because the, the hatch marks don't go over that guy's house, he cannot, he's, he's good, he's covered, he doesn't have to participate in it then? Or what?
So it would be mandatory from the bank, but he could send in a request to have it removed from the mandatory insurance, and any premiums paid would be refunded.
Okay.
Yeah. There's, one aspect of the whole thing is the mapping, the insurance. It's catch-22, goes back and forth, it's circular, you can't circumvent it. If you don't follow it, you lose the insurance for the county. We have a very good handle on it. We've had two certified floodplain managers work on this ordinance. I've got 20 years' experience with it. We've got good data coming down the line. It takes five years for these. it. We've got good data coming down the line. It takes five years for these ordinances to be created and then we get them and we're adopted. This is the best I've seen. It, it is. There's still quibbles from the engineering side because it's not that accurate. And really, it needs to be a flag and it needs to follow contours and it needs to follow the stream. And we can work with that. Do they have another question?
It is FEMA, that is the requiring agency.
Yeah, this is an unfunded mandate, very complex, has to be distilled, a lot of regulations into something applicable to our local community. And it's gone through four ordinance changes since I've been here that have all adopted higher standards and become better aware of the needs of the community to protect. Anymore?
Do you believe that all counties in our state are following these guidelines?
Yes. In fact, the communities Sioux Falls, T. Harrisburg, we're matching some of their standards and they're adopting the risk mapping.
But all counties have?
Not all, though. Out West River, there's no ordinance or floodplain even. So this is, this risk map modernization is the entire east side of the state.
Just the east side of the state.
Yes. And we're the last with Brookings, Manyahah, us, I forget the next, another county that are the last because we're seeing a lot of urbanization, a lot of changes. Like I've said, there's, this is the third iteration of flood mapping.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or in opposition to this Are there any other questions for staff from the board? If not, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda. Or not agenda, the ordinance.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes. Item nine.
Thank you.
A tabled motion.
Yes, number nine was a tabled motion for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as portion approximately 10 acres, north half, northwest quarter, except H1 and N, and north 211 and a half feet, east 412 feet, section 33, township 100 north, R49 west, from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County.
And Sean, what, the motion that we tabled, what was the motion that was on the board?
Motion was to approve this ordinance.
And who made the first and the second?
I placed it in the briefing form. Let me pull it up quick and I can say so in the record.
The motion was by Poppins, seconded by Schmidt.
Yep, to approve and adopt this ordinance.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'd ask Sean to call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens.
What are we voting on?
To approve the rezone.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item 10.
Can I ask something on that? I thought the main reason it was tabled is that they had to come up with a drainage plan. That isn't even brought up at this point. That was the reason it was tabled.
Motion's been made and carried, so it's not open for discussion anymore.
But you didn't give us a time to discuss it. You said that was the whole reason it was, was tabled for this time.
Go ahead.
I would like to address it if I could. In our previous rezone, we have clearly made a precedent not to be on the rezone side concerned about now the final drainage plan side, so that can be worked through yet. But the rezone, as the previous rezone, that was a separate issue. So acting on that way, that's the reason for the.
So when does that be brought up?
Site plan.
This gets brought up in front of the city of Harrisburg.
Yep.
They have subdivision authority in this case.
Maybe have more representation.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, that's unfortunately how the state sets this up for us.
Because why, why do we even have this team?
That's why we need the support of the board. That's why we need the commission behind this. As rural handler, we have nobody else. We need to.
I understand that, and we held the public hearing. So we'll move on to item 10. Toby, are you handling that?
Well, sure. I guess there was some correspondence placed in the report section at the. There was some correspondence placed in the report section of the previous agenda and board members asked for clarification of the letter.
And are you providing that clarification?
So the letter that you received was from the South Dakota Department of Agricultural and Natural Resources, and that was in reference to the general permit that was approved by the D A N R. The, the general permit was applied for and received prior to your approval of the conditional use permit. And essentially, that letter says that they're allowed 2,000 head on the subject parcel. You approved and amended conditional use permit, which limited it to 1,000. So you're going to say, well, there's a conflict between the two. Well, there isn't. The truth is that they're only going to have 1,000 head on there because that's from our land use zoning perspective on there. But they are, they do have a general permit that allows them to have 2,000 head on that property.
Thank you for that clarification. Item 11.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have before you a fireworks, fireworks permit, excuse me, by Mark Foster from Lincoln Lakes. He is a professional person at shooting fireworks, has done it for several aerial shows around this area for quite some time. I talked at length with him yesterday about the possibility of this not being approved because of our weather conditions and sight of the fact we may be instituting our burn ban very shortly, if not today yet, which in fact does not address fireworks, but just to impress upon him the fact that it may be very dangerous to be shooting fireworks with our current weather conditions. He understands this and would abide by whatever decision the county commission makes. I spoke with the fire chief in Harrisburg, Cody Lenkeek. They have agreed to have three fire vehicles out at this site on the 10th, or excuse me, the, the 9th, should this be approved. I said this would be one stipulation I would bring forth and whatever you folks as a commission choose to do with this, he will abide by, so.
What are the thoughts of the commission?
Harold, they would have the fire trucks out there, or fire.
Yeah.
Trucks out there.
And he, I, I told him we would probably deny this if Harrisburg would not do that. And I talked to the chief this morning again. They're going to have six people that have volunteered to go out there and be there when this is done. But I would also add this may set precedence for another application we have for fireworks on the 10th, which will come before the commission on this July 6 meeting. So I'm a little hesitant with, with these, you know, even the one that's proposed coming up next is north of Lenox on 467th, B275, what is it, Sean? 43, 467th, which is the corner east of Randy White's and then to the north. And I have not had a chance to talk to this gentleman about this yet, if he is just doing this as a private person or if he is also a professional person to do this, so.
Does he have to know today, Harold?
Mr. Foster would like to know pretty soon because he hasn't purchased his fireworks yet and he won't should this be denied by the county commission. I may ask him that question. I said, have you got a lot of money invested so far? And he said, no. He looks for some help from the Lincoln Lakes folks there, but he said most of it he spends out of his own pocket.
State allow us at all to ban fireworks out in the rural areas at all in general?
I don't know that they do. We as a county in our ordinance for burn ban do not. I think he have a copy of that in front of you. And how would you?
The state gives the authority to.
Yeah.
To do such thing. We're in unprecedented drought situation.
Right. And how would, how would you police that or enforce it?
Yeah.
It'd be a nightmare. It's easy to.
It'd be a nightmare, but it maybe put people on record to, if they cause a fire even, or have damage, that'd even be more of a burden on them.
And I think that's the case now. Should you do something that impinges upon your neighbor, causes damage, you're probably going to be held responsible for it, so.
How close to a burn ban are we, Harold?
Very close. There are several counties already that have them instituted. Yankton County's looking at doing it fairly quick. Manyah County's looking at doing it fairly quick. Brookings County already has. Beadle Kingsbury, Brookings, Minor, Gerald, Hanson, McCook, Bon Home, Lyon County, Minnesota are in effect already. I spoke with Jason Gierman yesterday. Manyah County is looking at this as we speak or at their meeting. They're hesitant with this fireworks thing, so.
Well, you know, excuse me. Even if we do get rain, it's, it's still dry. The sun's going to come out and there's, there's just dry grass and everything. I mean, it's.
You know, that's, well, when we do get rain, it's scattered. You know, the city of Lenox had an inch, inch and a quarter. My place, I got 42 hundreds. Mile south of Lenox, four tenths. Randy White, just a mile from me, 2,500, so.
So Harold, the burn ban though, or if we, if we did a burn ban, that is not going to restrict the average person from going out and shooting off fireworks.
Nothing to do with fireworks, according to our ordinance.
I would rather have a professional with three grass trucks standing nearby that maybe would be a disincentive to other people from going out and doing their own displays and during a holiday weekend, per se, if they had something else to look at. So to me, this almost seems like the more responsible thing to do.
I would say Mr. Foster is probably as responsible as you can get. He has a, an area designated from which to launch the aerial show. So it's totally up to the commission. And I said, I have to research our next permit coming up for the meeting on June 6th and see if it's private or how that's going to go and so, so forth.
So what direction do you want to give to Harold?
Have you heard from me? T just shot off a nice show here over the T-Bot days and.
Right. I talked to Mayor Lawler again last evening before their meeting. T banned fireworks within the city limits, all of them. Harrisburg has done nothing yet. City of Canton is banning aerial fireworks. They can shoot ground. I think Mayor, the mayor's gone. Yeah, right. But that's the way Canton is approaching this.
So now we're going to get pushed even more out in the rural areas?
Probably, and we don't have a good way to manage that. They, they do it anyhow. And like I said, there's no way to police or enforce, you know, not doing it in the country. We don't have enough law enforcement officers in the state to manage a county, let alone.
How many township roads do we go down and there is just nothing but fireworks?
Yeah.
Up and down the roads with all the debris and all the.
Right.
Stuff they have left over.
My take on Mr. Foster's application is I, I would suggest not approving it.
I would.
And he will understand this. He may not like me, but, and he's been real good to work with in the conversations that we've had. And because if we're going to impose a burn ban for outdoor or open fires, which by the way, doesn't include a burn barrels unless the Weather Service Institute a red flag warning or a very extreme fire danger. So.
Does that include fire pits then too?
No, fire pits are allowable as long as they're screened, covered. If you look through our ordinance, if it has a chimney or something like that, they're allowed. Burn bales will be allowed if they have a quarter inch screen over them, so.
So the fire chief who would have to respond to this, who would have to deal with this if this became a problem, is okay with it?
He would have vehicles there, so.
But he didn't say, Harold, I wouldn't do that if I were you.
No, he didn't. He said, we'll do whatever we can to help them, but if it gets disapproved, he won't have an issue with it. The fire chief won't. And Mark would like to do it, but he said he understands should we deny the permit. So you fine folks get to make a decision.
Well, you got to make tough decisions and you can't give everybody they always want. And it's a tough year.
My phone will be the one ringing off the hook, so it's, whatever you choose to do, I'll manage.
And I think maybe, look, I would love to have these guys be able to do their fireworks. But it's a tough, and if the chief says he doesn't have a problem with it, he's the guy who's got to deal with, he's going to get the phone call, right?
Right. And they'd be on scene no matter what. They're not going.
They're on scene anyway.
Right. So like I said, it's, but it's, it's a, a bad year for fireworks. Let's just put it that, that way.
And we still got a couple of weeks to go.
We do.
Yeah, with 100 degrees.
You know, the problem is this isn't going to, allowing him or not allowing him, I don't think is going to be the actual issue. We're going to have the issue of that recreational out in the country, road ditches and pastures and that spreading is going to be our issue.
All of the above, yeah.
And we have no control over that, you're telling me?
Not that I'm aware of, or how we would enforce or lease something like that, so. Last year after the 4th of July display in Lenox on the 4th, somebody had a bottle rocket get into a barn and we burnt that down just southwest of Lenox.
That was last year.
Yeah. So, and it was, you know, our, our roofs are dry and no matter what you do, it's a dry sit, situation. If it were my decision, I would say let's deny this permit and possibly the one coming the next meeting too, but it's up to you. Like I said, I'll be, I'll be the one getting the phone calls and taking the heat and we'll, we'll manage that.
Commissioner Gibbon, how do you feel about it?
I feel like we should deny.
How about you, Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Poppins?
The problem is this, this gentleman is responsible, taking the steps ahead of time to be prepared. I don't know that I feel like penalizing him when I'm going to see my roads littered in fireworks by irresponsible, unfortunately, people that don't, before didn't even clean up their mess and now are going to be forced out of municipalities, which used to be very, you know, understanding and now have done the responsible thing to shut it down.
I would add, it was my idea and request that he get the fire department out there and I talked to the fire department to see if they would do that, so.
So at this point, I, I'm going to trust this gentleman's judgment because he has done it many years. I'm not going to tell him that he should do it. I'm not going to tell him he shouldn't do it. I'm just going to say, I'm not going to say that he can't do it. That's my feeling. If that's not a political. my feeling. If that's not a political answer, I don't know what is.
How many sides of the street do you want on that one?
We got both sides of the fence covered, that plus the top, so.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Well, the fire chief didn't seem to have a problem with it, and he's the guy who would have to fix the problem if it became one, and so if the fire chief says it's okay, I don't have an issue with it. Maybe, what's this, maybe Mr. Foster needs to think long and hard about whether he wants to put everybody through that or not.
Oh, if you should move for approval, I'm going to go to him with that same argument. Use your own judgment, you know, and we'd prefer you didn't, but it was approved, so if you can make it work, and if you cause a disaster, we'll have to deal with that.
Madam Chair, it's up to you.
That's fine if it's up to me. Is somebody making a motion, please?
I would move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, motion carries. And I would also appreciate if you would give him those cautions. He's got it, but he needs to be responsible about it.
He is very responsible and understanding, and I'm still gonna put the ball in his court as to whether or not he wants to do it, citing our current weather conditions.
Understandable.
And I probably will enact the burn ban. I've talked to all of the fire chiefs in the county, they're saying we need to do this. We haven't had a big issue yet with open burning, but we don't want one, and we did have one incident south of our county highway shop where a piece of equipment going down the road started to ditch on fire in a few places, and burnt a green bean field black part of it, so.
The bean field is because of the cornstalks in it?
It was a no, no till, so the residue caught, burnt the beans black, so it's not a good fire situation at the point in time.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you.
Are you providing lunch since we're still here?
Well, while we're on the topic of the time, you have to leave at 12:15?
Latest, that's very late. I should be leaving right now, in fact.
What do we have left, Madam Chair? That could be tabled.
Well, I think we could, I don't see our highway superintendent, so we could probably table items 19 and 20. We can table item 13.
Take care of Julia.
Probably could take care of Julia quick. Why don't we try doing that?
Hopefully I'm quick.
Yes, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, go ahead with item 14, Julia. It's your new hire in the sheriff's office.
Okay, which table items, Madam?
We haven't...
We, we have to act on it.
We haven't tabled them yet.
We have a table.
I'm just gonna start jumping around.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, item 14, approve hire of Casey Nesmo as a full-time office assistant for the sheriff's office at 18:51.
So moved.
Excuse me, we're on item 14?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second, too, for the new hire?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
He stepped out.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next to hire, actually to promote Sarah Benz full-time property technician to a full-time praiser position at 2179 per hour effective the 21st of July.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Uh, next to approve the hire of Jill Fossum as a full-time legal office assistant for the state's attorney's office at 18:51 per hour effective the 6th of July.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Uh, next is to approve the hire of Anthony Zongo as a full-time deputy sheriff for the sheriff's office at 2255 per hour effective yesterday, which is June 21st, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Um, and lastly, the last thing I have is, the highway superintendent would like to combine the light and heavy equipment operator positions for continuity and recruitment purposes, effective on Monday.
Is this a new position or a combination of two?
It would be a combination of two positions.
Is there a motion?
I'll so move then.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gibbon, a second by Commissioner Aaronz. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Madam Chair, if you'd be willing, I'd offer a motion to table items 12, 13, 19, and 20 until next week's meeting.
All right. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Mr. Golden, can you take us to item 21?
Yes. We have two county poor relief settlement requests at this point. There is, I'll just use their, we have one with a gentleman who had suffered from emergency care starting back in 2014. He has approximately, I believe, 21 other accounts that they may be bringing to Lincoln County as far as for settlement. They're offering to dismiss all of those because he has a claim which at the initial charge was 137,980.29. The Medicaid rate is 18,405, and they're asking to dismiss all of those. This is one that we haven't gone through our normal process. We usually do depositions, we take and figure out their incomes, and so this is pre-doing all of that, and they're connecting it to one that we have gone through that process, which is, the initial charge was 19,000, the Medicare charge is 11,752.32, and they want to get it done by June 30th because apparently that's their end of year. Associated with the other ones are another, I think 12 claims that they haven't filed, but they have appealed at this point in time that are pending. And so they're attempting to settle both those claims at the same time for the Medicaid amount. One would be the 18,000, the other is 11,000, dismissing all of the other claims. Both of these, or the one that we have been through, there is an issue in whether or not she could have attained insurance, and whether or not it's actually the county's role in this, or the county should actually have to pay this. The battle going on there is whether or not there was some assistance given by the state to actually sign her up for insurance, and that didn't take place, and whether or not there's some liability for doing that. I haven't been able to discover any, any involvement of the county or the state for any of that, the claims that are being made, so.
Bill, are the claims with the same healthcare system?
It's all with the very...
So this is a benefit of the bargain situation for everyone involved?
Yes. I believe the second one is a fairly close call on whether or not if we litigated it, whether or not we'd have to actually pay those charges, but you know how litigation is, it could go either direction. And the other one, we were aware that this one was coming, it is a very large amount, and so I, I do think we have some exposure on that one, so.
I'll move to settle and compromise the claims the way in which Mr. Golden explained.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Consider a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a very quick one that we have a lot of, we need to address in executive session.
I would draw the second.
Okay.
I'll move to the executive session under pending litigation.
Contract litigation.
Contract litigation.
Second.
Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
I have a motion in the second, come on executive session.
Who was that motion in second?
Poppins and then, uh...
Aaronz. Aaronz. Second.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Yes.
Schmidt is absent.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you all for a nice, lovely meeting.
Consider a motion to adjourn?
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you. I think Gibbon's got the...